All right, I need a motion then to reconvene open session.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcy and this is Petrie, let's accept it.
Okay, all in favor of reconvening, raise your hand again, thank you. All right, welcome to our board meeting for the Hillsborough School District, it's nice to see a crowd, lots of visitors, so we thank you for coming. If you would stand with us please and we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some special recognitions this evening, I think we'll start with the junior high. If, Mr. Allison, would you like to share your good news with us, please?
I would, Mr. Reed, now he's going to share his computer.
Okay.
Uh, the junior high would like to recognize our 2016-17 track team for their accomplishments in the classroom. The team consisted of over seventy students who maintained an average team GPA of 3.4 during their season. Head coach Will Keenan and his staff did a great job emphasizing the importance of making good grades. Coaches talked to students and their teachers, coordinated tutoring sessions and ran grade checks to keep up on student progress. Overall, there were sixteen students who earned a 4.0, including the following: we have eighth graders Lauren Law, Gracie Schmidt, Zoe Wood, Emma Wright, and Michael Wright. And we also have quite a few seventh graders, Marissa Barton, Tony Bishop, Ashlyn Dean, Kayla Yen, Mary Kate Westy, Hunter Howard, Michelle Jones, Maggie Kearney, Alan Moore, Ella Stevens, and Kayla Van Horn.
Okay, congratulations. And I believe the high school has some good news to share with us, so Dr. Freeman?
We are so full of good news and thank you, Mrs. Reed, for sharing your computer. Uh, the first thing we wanted to share was that Logan Hendricks was selected to represent the state of Missouri last June at the Congress of Future Scientists and Technology Leaders in Boston. Logan is a recipient of an award of excellence by the National Academy of Future Scientists and Technologists for his outstanding academic performance, leadership potential, and dedication to sobering humanity through science, technology, engineering, and math. Logan is one of our AAA students, he's in the Academy, the Associate of Arts Academy, or the doctoral or graduate kids that are in the academy, so we're really proud of him. And then we're going to bring on Ms. Outlaw again this evening. Kylie Outlaw has been named as a commended student in the 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program. Kylie was recognized by the program as having exceptional academic promise and outstanding performance on her PSAT, and of course, we knew that, we were very excited about her ACT score and her PSAT was awesome. And we'd like to congratulate Carly Sanders, who on 1/18/17 approached, tied, and then broke the state's single-season homerun record in softball with her fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth homerun against Jefferson R. Seven. And Mr. Moreno, what number is she up to now?
She's sitting at twenty, as of today, and then the team has broken the state record as a team, they're at forty-eight.
And Marcy Volleyball took first place in the Red Division Silver Bracket at the Dig for Life CMO Tournament, and then they went on the following week to win their conference, so that was exciting. We would like to extend a huge thank you to the Hillsborough High School Student Council because they outfitted the entire school in matching This Is Our House t-shirts, which we wore last Thursday to kick off our Spirit Week, it's truly like a week plus now. And, um, we all wore our shirts, it was a great way to promote unity, and we got our picture taken out in the front of the building and it was just awesome. So we want to thank them because they did pay for and provide those shirts to everyone. And then the Hillsborough High School Renaissance Program kicked off their year this year by awarding close to four hundred cards to students. And these were based on students' spring GPAs. Students earned either silver cards if they had a 3.0 to a 3.49 GPA, a gold card for 3.5 to 3.99, or a blue card, meaning they have a 4.0 or better. And then these cards are loaded with perks, so they can get into games for free, the 4.0 kids can bring in guests, a parent can come in, they got five dollars off their homecoming ticket, so there's just all kinds of perks on there for them, so we're really excited that we're doing Renaissance cards again. That's what we want to share this evening, thank you.
The board would like to recognize two individuals this evening for one of their, for their outstanding accomplishments. Director Stevenson is going to present a medal to Isaiah Martin, if he'd come forward. Isaiah Martin had a great junior season of track and field, this was last spring. Primarily a hurdler, Isaiah ran both hurdle races and most of our track meets last season. In that time, he finished first twelve times in the 110 and six times in the 300 hurdles, and was a state qualifier in both, finishing third in the 110s and second in the 300 hurdles at the Class Four State Track Meet in May. Isaiah was the state champion in the javelin for Class Four by having a winning throw of 161 feet nine inches. In addition to those three events, he qualified in the long jump as well. Over the summer, he competed in the decathlon at various track and field meets throughout the United States, and capped off this summer by finishing second in the nation in his age group at the USA TF Junior Olympics. He is currently receiving interest and offers from many NCAA Division One, Two, and Three colleges around the nation. He would like to go into the medical field and be an anesthesiologist.
Cool.
Our second student that we would like to recognize, Director Cruz, is going to present him with the medal, if Dylan Owens would come forward. During the 2016-17 school year, the wrestling team had its first state medalist since 2014. Dylan Owens compiled a record of forty-five wins and two losses his junior season, on his way to a three, or, on his way to a Class Three, 120 pounds, second-place finish. This is Hillsborough's fourth state finalist in school history. In addition to a state finish, Dylan was a 2017 district champion, De Soto Tournament champion, CMO Conference champion, Excelsior Springs Invitational Champion, and Hillsborough Duels Champion. Going into his senior year, Dylan has collected 124 wins and 23 loss records. Congratulations, Dylan. That's very impressive, Dylan, we are very proud of you as well, congratulations. Gentlemen, thanks for being here, too. Okay, so those are lots of good things going on in our school, it's good to hear them, excited for them, good things to come still. All right, let's move on then, we'll start with the consent agenda. There are several items listed this evening, and hopefully you had an opportunity to go through them and review all of the details, and if you have any questions or concerns about any of the items, please let us know so we can maybe remove them and pull them to discuss after we approve the rest of the agenda.
I would like to pull underage, number four and five, for discussion.
Okay. So we, these are our overnight trips?
Only number four and five though.
Right, but those are the two that you want to pull to discuss. Okay, anybody have any other concerns or issues? Okay, so I would like to have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda except for items four and five under the overnight trip request. Thank you, Eric and Angela. Okay, all in favor of approving this, these action items on the consent agenda, raise your hand, please. Okay, so we need to listen to your concerns?
Well, I just have, I've got some questions. Number four is the Stuco advisor trip, and one of my questions is, this is in Washington, and, you know, I know that that is costly, are the advisors going to the one, the state advisors conference in October?
Yes.
In Camden Town?
I believe they are, we did last year, do you know if they're going to that one?
Okay.
Well, no. I'm sorry, I was taking a picture, I wasn't sure.
That's all right, because, you know, I, we've never, personally, I've never heard of them participating in the state one, and that was my question when I first started.
They go to the state one every year, I believe. And the national one, they used to go to every year, and the board wished that they would just go every other year, so this is the other year, is why they're considering. Last year it was a fifteen.
Oh, they went to Niagara Falls?
Yeah.
The other question I had, this is two days, December first and third, and the information that was given to us, the pre-conference begins like Friday, 7:30, speaker begins at 1:00 PM.
Okay.
And so I would, and then it's over by noon on Sunday, and so I was questioning why two days and not just Friday. You follow what I'm saying?
I follow what you're saying, I would have to ask them for clarification, because there may be a reason they're going beforehand. I don't know if they have a pre-meet or anything of that nature, so I'd have to ask them.
I'm not clear, what days are you talking about? You're saying that they're coming in on Thursday night before Friday?
Well, it doesn't actually identify that, but they're asking for two days, and it's from December one to three, which is Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and when you look at the timing, it doesn't, you know, I don't see two days of school being missed.
I bet they're traveling on Thursday.
Yeah, I would think that traveling, they're driving, it would be Thursday, they're driving.
They're flying, so why not fly after school Thursday, why take Thursday out?
I guess it depends on the flight.
I'll use myself as an example, okay, so when I go to the national conference, I look at those flights, and maybe the flight they're taking is cheaper than all the other flights that are listed, or it could be a deal where maybe the flight is only at a certain time, so that's why they have to fly out at the time they're flying out. Without having personally done it myself, I can't answer as to why it is the way it is, but I would be confident in saying that it probably has something to do with where that flight is slotted and when they have to fly out.
Or what's available.
Yeah.
It's a four, four and a half hour flight.
You don't think so? And the other concern I had is getting two math teachers out before finals, like this is like a couple of weeks right before finals.
Sure.
At the secondary level, that is.
And I think that's one of the reasons that the board wished they would go every other year, unfortunately, they both sponsor and they're both in the same department. Hopefully, you know, they'll have their plans set up, they'll have them to be ready to go, and they come back with their kids ready for their finals.
Is this something where we could send one and not two?
We, we talked about that a couple of years ago, and the reason that we sent two is because they have different workshops, they go on at the same time, so they don't go to the same workshop, they go to the different workshops and they're going to share what they garnered from the workshops that they go to. So if you send one, you're cutting out half of the conference basically for them to garner information from.
Plus, I don't know, I mean, as for myself, when I go to a conference, we usually, I usually go with another person from work because it's kind of nice to have somebody there.
And I'm thinking that Spokane, it depends on what airport they're coming into, they may have, if they fly to Seattle, they're going to have a pretty good drive to Spokane. I don't know if they're flying to Kansas.
Well, St. Louis not being a hub anymore, that cheapens everything, this works, your flights, and you can't go.
So even, so this is like a Friday and Monday off, or do we know that?
I don't have the paperwork in front of me, you do, so I don't know.
Oh!
Because it's on my summary that I wrote, on the executive summary.
They must travel back on Sunday.
That sounds correct to me.
Well, believing that Thursday, that doesn't indicate that on here.
No, if you keep scrolling down, there's a copy of their travel, their flight.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but as far as the class, they just maybe have.
The flight leaves at 7:25 on Thursday morning. But again, that may be the only flight going out on Thursday.
Any other questions or concerns regarding this particular event? So do we want to vote on this one and then we'll vote on the other separately? So I need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
The Stuco?
Stuco.
Conference trip. Okay. Wow. Okay, I'll have Angela first. Okay, all in favor of approving this trip? All opposed? All right, the next item has to do with the Jazz Band Festival, or Music Festival, concert and jazz band, I suppose. And one of the things that I noticed on this one right away was that it was not necessarily approved by Dr. Corman.
That's correct.
This was?
I, I did not approve this trip, but overnight trips traditionally have come to the board for approval, and so we moved it forward to the board for consideration. I have serious concerns about our kids and our staff going to Atlanta, and I, and I struggle with this, because just to be honest, as a dad, I have a daughter that would be going on this trip, and I told her that she would not be going, simply because of the current state of issues in our country right now, I think that that's not a safe trip. And the reason I don't think that is because our kids aren't constantly going to be at one locale, they're going to be traveling around, they're going to be at Six Flags, Hard Rock Cafe, not that I don't think this is a good trip and a trip for kids, I'm still just concerned about what's going on in the country right now. If I had to approve this in December, it might be a different thought. But we're canceling trips left and right into St. Louis right now, and I don't see that this is a good thing for our kids.
I kind of disagree, I mean, I don't know a lot about this trip, and I'd like to know if this is a trip they always go on, but honestly, I work in St. Louis, I think sometimes there's an element of fear just, that is increased by over-media exposure to things, and, I don't know, I just, I'd like to hear more about this, do they go to this every year, or?
They have a, they have a band trip that they go on every four years. And four years ago, they went to Gatlinburg, I believe in the past they go to Pigeon Forge, is that correct?
Correct.
Every three, so every three or four years, they have a band trip. This year, they chose Atlanta. They always go through the company that is listed on there, which is Music in the Parks, they have tour guides that are on their buses, this, that, and the other. It's a company that specializes in these trips that, again, we've used for all the other trips that we've gone on. Dr. Corman and I have had great conversations concerning this, and I, I don't disagree with him, and I don't, I understand his feeling on it, and I shared my counterpoints to his as well, and I don't, I don't know what the best answer is, but we come to you guys to get the approval, and I understand anytime we go on a trip with our kids, it's uneasy, so to say, no matter where we're going, when we're taking kids somewhere overnight. So this is the year for the band trip, and this is what they're hoping to do, the band director understands it may not happen, we've been touched on that, and, I mean, we have to find somewhere else, I don't know, you know, there's other trips available, it's just a matter of, can we get it booked, where are we going to go, how, things of that nature.
I have, I have a lot of reservations about this.
Sure.
And totally different from Dr. Corman's reservations. To me, they're going to Six Flags, there are a lot of Six Flags that offer Music in the Park, I would think that we would be able to find one closer. My biggest reservation, I think, is the time, this is May, toward the end of school, when they should be preparing for final exams. Fifteen kids to one adult, that bothers me greatly. Sixty thousand dollars taken out of the community, that bothers me. I just have all kinds of reservations about this.
I, I completely understand, and to that, I would say, the sixty thousand dollars from the community, for example, that is the parents funding.
I understand that, but it is still coming out of our community.
It is.
And are we responsible for paying the instructors? Are they going to be paid their salary while they're taking this trip? I would assume that they would be.
I would assume that it's no different than when we have trips like to Washington or.
Are we going to have to hire subs for them?
Again, no different than any other trips that we've had, I would say, yes, we will.
But I just, I have a lot of reservations about this, and, you know, if it was the Smithsonian, where I, where it was really a cultural experience, I probably would not have as many reservations, but this is Six Flags, we have a Six Flags thirty miles away, and that bothers me a lot.
And I believe the Six Flags is a portion of the trip, it's not the entire trip, it's a portion of the trip that they're on.
Isn't that why the concert?
That's where the concerts and everything take place, shifts, because of Music in the Parks.
So it looks like the first deposit is due tomorrow, is that refundable?
Yeah, and, and Mr. Dieter is fully prepared to do whatever he has to.
So if we?
We worked with this company and told them, we have to get this board approved, we understand your timeline that you want us to operate by, but they work with us and they understand that if this doesn't happen tonight, we may call them tomorrow during all the chaos of homecoming, of course.
Yes.
And let them know what's going on. We're prepared for that as well.
Well, and my thought was, if it's not approved this evening, and we postpone it and look at it again next month, maybe have a better understanding of the state of our country, things of that nature, some concerns. Was that deposit refundable, or is it applied to a different trip? How does that work?
Well, I believe he's just, he is collecting the deposit, we haven't deposited, so to say, we have them in their hold until we know what we're doing with them. If we're not going on the trip, we refund the money back to the parents.
Because it looks like it's payable tomorrow to music tours.
It is, it is, and we would pay it if we had to, and if not, if we have to go back to the drawing board, if that's the wish of the board, and you want us to further investigate this trip, further investigate other trips or whatnot, we do that, and we understand that, but I get it. Like I said, Dr. Corman and I have had many discussions on this, we've talked about even when we travel downtown, when we go to Washington, when we go all these other, I think there's impaired risks that we assume, no matter where we're traveling, whether it's Atlanta or?
St. Louis.
St. Louis. Unfortunately, the world we live in, we have to be on our toes everywhere we go, so.
I asked Dr. Corman, as a parent right now, did you guys do a survey of the parents and whether or not they were on board with this particular locale?
My understanding is that the band has been sending out information since roughly July, and we've had no negative feedback, so to say, none that I've been made aware of myself. Mr. Dieter and I, we've talked in length on this, and we understand that if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, we'll figure it out.
Is there anything about, my only experience with it over that trip, that's the parent that is DC, you know, there was overnight security at the hotels. I didn't see that in here, I could have very easily missed that, is that part of this or not?
I don't believe it is, no. I, I don't believe we have any security, the security is going to be that we're at the hotel and we'll have our chaperones with us. The fifteen to one ratio, I believe that's well within what our district guidelines are, if I remember correctly, I think we're more at a twenty or twenty, twenty-five to one.
For hotel trips?
We definitely set parameters on that because of the age of students.
Right, but I think at the high school level, we are within that parameter.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, at a hotel, you're asking for a lot of, I mean, the security that Eric's bringing up is awesome, because you're talking about the DC trip and what, um.
Isn't that part of the package?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's the part of the tour, but, boy, would that be awesome to have for a high school trip when you have high schoolers in a hotel.
Absolutely, it would be.
Yes.
On the flip side of that, too, we can get more chaperones, but then it comes back to the concern that Miss Petrie had with the last trip, we're taking more people on classrooms, because we're going to be taking our teachers, our people that are background checked, our people that are certified in all of these trips.
You wouldn't need that with this kind of security. It's a video camera going all the time in the hallway so kids aren't roaming the halls and changing rooms. I mean, it's kind of, to me, as a parent that doesn't have a high, is not involved in this, but that's, that's a huge risk for any high school trip, to me, it's just the, you know, the risks there.
So the supervisors, they're all teachers?
There are going to be some background-checked band booster members, you're going to have all of our band instructors, they asked myself, they talked to Dr. Freeman about the possibilities, Miss Layman has been on the trip before about going, it's going to be mostly our school personnel, our school personnel and our background-checked band.
And again, this is right at the end of the school year, I just, I, I just can't.
My question is, was the summer ever considered as a time to go? Because I know other overnight trips, when they do these travel fun-type trips, they do it in the summer, swing choir goes in the summer, right.
You know, Ms. Walker, I don't know what the logistics of band, to be honest with you, I'm not saying that it's not a possibility, I don't know, I don't know if we've always done it this way, because we've always done it this way, or if there's a rhyme or reason for why we do it this way.
Well, I know they, they did with Trout Line, they did in May, but they went to World's Fun, they didn't take.
Oh, are you guys?
Those long, and those were more weekend.
I'm all about kids going on trips and this stuff, but the one thing I'm curious about, I'm looking at their schedule, and unless the schedule's not right, they don't actually do any music until day four.
Yes.
Day one, they're on the bus, day two, they go watch the make news and see, and they go to the Coca-Cola Museum, they eat at the Hard Rock, go to day three Stone Mark, Stone Mountain Park, which is.
So wild.
And then they go to a dinner theater, and then day four, they have, it sounds like, a music festival for a small portion of time, and then Six Flags, all the rides, the rest of the day. So I, the only thing is, I wish there was more actual band stuff.
Right, it doesn't seem, it seems more like a, a playdate, I mean, rather than an actual educational opportunity.
But we also have lots of parents, or I don't have a number, that have already paid money for this, is that correct?
Correct.
They've already, I know that, I know that he's still holding that to, but parents are already under the assumption that this is a done deal.
I don't want to say the term of the assumption that it's a done deal, because it's been communicated to them that it still has to have been approved, and I hate the timing of it, because I don't ever want to put you all in a position where it looks like we've approved that we're going to do something and that you have no choice but to approve it, that's not the perception that we.
That's kind of how it looks.
I understand that, and that's not what we want to for a trip, and that is why communications would send out to further emphasize that this has to be board-approved.
And I don't, I personally, I don't feel like I'm being pressured, honestly, but my concern is, a hundred students are going to be gone pretty much the week before schools right now scheduled to be out. And, you know, true staff is going to be gone, too. And I, you know, I have sponsored trips like this, senior trips, et cetera, et cetera, and I thought it was awesome when the DC trip actually hired security to watch those hallways, because I've been a teacher on those trips, that I was up all night long supervising to make sure my high school kids were not sharing rooms and jumping in, going to the local pub, et cetera, et cetera. And it's not fun as a teacher, because then you get worn down and you're on this trip for, you know, a well, this is just, what, four days? You know, and it's not, you know, fun, but the lack of the academic aspect that they're really, like Rob said, you know, into the fourth day and that's only, what, one or two hours? That's where my concerns were, that a hundred kids and staff being gone pretty much the week before school was out, finals. I would rather see it in June.
Would it be possible, since some of the parents have already paid, that you guys could, is it, is there a lot of other options that could be looked at? There's so many concerns with this that could it still happen for them? Because we don't want.
Oh, I feel like it.
I think these trips are great. I love, like, I think most of us agree, it's, it's great. But I think people raise a lot of concerns. So is there a possibility that we could, you could look into something else?
Absolutely. I don't feel as though if this is denied, that we're not here to do anything. I think then we come back to you next month and we say, okay, we've done some more research and this is what we've come up with. To Mr. Dieter's defense, if you will, this is his first year as a band director. Unfortunately, it falls in the year that is a band trip, that the kids that know that it's a band trip year, they're expecting a band trip.
Exactly, they are.
He's trying to do the best job that he can. We understand that it may not happen. And if it doesn't, myself, him, Dr. Freeman, whoever, we'll all go back. We'll look at everything. We'll see if we can come up with a better option. If you want us to look at a different month, at June, we'll talk about that as well. Again, I don't know if the reason we don't do June is because, well, families are planning vacations at that time and then you're gonna lose kids or, I don't know.
Mrs. Layman indicated that that's why they avoid the summer is because summer band camp takes up several, a couple of weeks of their time and so they can never get the group together during the summer. That's what.
Right.
There are any choice of the summer that they ask parents to avoid vacations for and you're never gonna get the whole band to compete together.
This is once every four years.
There is a conflict, too, with some sporting events.
Right, track.
That are being held at that time.
There very well may be.
Which will prevent kids from participating as well.
Kids will choose, yes, absolutely.
I mean, state track meets, baseball.
There'll be, I don't know if state track is that week or not. I think it's the week after because it's at the very end of May. But there is a national archery competition that is the same week as the band trip. But, you know, again with that, there's always conflict. We, I, and I'm not trying to double advocate, I'm just trying to put it all on.
Well, my point is, no matter when you have it, there's going to be conflict.
Absolutely.
Exactly, whether it's the summer or.
But, but back to what you said, Mrs. Hiney, to go back and to look at it further and come back to, yes. I, I think a portion of that depends on, again, the company we're using for this one, they set the timeline for us and that's why it is the way it is right now. Maybe we get with this company and we figure out a different timeline and we work with that, we, we connect to you in October.
I just, I, I would hate for them to lose the chance to do it. But I guess there's just so many problem, different things that people are bringing up.
Understood. Understood.
So what? There is an motion.
The first one?
No.
I'll stick up your mic.
We don't have a motion on that. So that's kind of what we need to decide. Do we wanna make a motion or do we wanna up those? Pardon? Or go back to the drawing board? I don't know.
Well, if you table it, you're tabling this.
Just this idea.
But you're tabling Atlanta.
Atlanta at this time?
That's right. So when they come back, you're still gonna take Atlanta off the floor or do something with it.
Well, that's why I said, that's why I said the drawing board.
Right.
Maybe restructure. I don't know. Look at other options. Maybe that's a better idea.
So we need to take a vote on this so that they can look at other options.
Well, to make a motion in that regard.
Do we have to vote on it? We can table it?
We can table this and have different options as well.
But we still have to vote on Atlanta. To vote on Atlanta, they can still come back with another thing, right?
So when they come back next month, you're still gonna have to vote on Atlanta because you have it tabled. And so you have to vote on that and then take up the next option. So either way, you're still gonna do it.
I mean, to accept the trip as presented. To accept the trip as presented, does that have to be possible?
Affirmative, correct.
Okay. Okay, and Eric, second. Okay, all in favor of approving this trip as presented, raise your hand. Okay, all opposed? Okay, so. Pardon?
But we're against.
So we're not against the trip.
Completely understood and I probably am in a way. I, I get it, I get it.
Okay. I've let the band kids to take their trips, especially those seniors, because they waited for this.
And if there isn't any other options and maybe this is tweaked a little?
And we might come back, yeah. And we can revise what we're doing. Absolutely. I get it. And Mr. Dieter and I will work on it after the show.
After the after.
We'll do that till next week.
Have to tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it for?
Thanks, Ed.
Are you ready?
No.
All right. Okay, so we'll move on then. I think that's the longest we've ever spent on a case. We'll start with reports and begin with Dr. Corman's report.
All right, thank you. I'm not going to pledge to keep it short. I will apologize, several things to talk to you about. Hall of Fame and cross-country course, we're working on that. Mr. Marino has been having some discussions with other neighboring schools trying to get some data together for you with regard to the Hall of Fame. The cross-country course naming could prove logistically to be a little difficult simply because that course moves from time to time. And plus, you're gonna be naming the civic grounds, which is part of the course after an individual. Eddie and I have been talking and Dr. Freeman about, you know, naming maybe a meet after Frank Schultz rather than moving and naming the course after Frank Schultz. So we're having those discussions. Hope to have some more information back to you by October. I know that we like the Hall of Fame idea. We've had some talks about that. Eddie and I have had, and Mrs. Welker, where are we gonna put it? How, you know, what would be the logistically, how are folks named to that? How are they recognized? Who will be included in that? So there's a lot to still work out and there are several neighboring schools that have it so we hope to have that back to you. I wanna talk just a moment, as I listed here, you had an opportunity to read about the EPA football field. Ray, we haven't had any updates since their thirteenth of September meeting, correct?
Correct.
All right, so in essence, I copied this email and stuck it in here for you to read with regard to where the EPA is. They're kinda struggling with their contractor. They're issuing, issuing letters. They want the contractor to say, yes, either we accept what we need to fix or we don't. The EPA is leaning toward still taking care of the property, which includes doing some crack filling and maybe some overlay if approved. And if you go back by the Field House, you see that little section back there. It wasn't supposed to be that little section, it's supposed to be the entire section. So they only fixed one little spot. So EPA is, is struggling to get the contractor to fulfill their obligation. I also wanna mention, I listed here our SRO resource officer needs. And all intents and purposes, I see that our contract in Jefferson County is being canceled within the next thirty to sixty days. Things that I'm working on are how do we keep maintaining the school resource officer position? I've talked, Mrs. Ginge, about monetarily, well, we're currently paying that contract in Jefferson County. Do we hire our own SRO? We've been talking with insurance, attorneys, how do you do that with regard to school resource officers and school protection officers? The law's changed where you can have a school protection officer. However, it's, it's better if the commissioned officer is commissioned by a local municipality rather than the district being in charge of the commission. And by that, you're talking about the post qualifications. There are certifications two times a year for handguns. So there's a lot of logistics I'm working with. I spent about three hours at Windsor. Windsor's officer retired from Jefferson County and was able to keep his retired officer's commission. So that's how they're working through it. But they also have two SROs through Jefferson County. So I want you to know that in October, be planning to have something in front of you about how we're gonna deal with this issue. If you have any thoughts, you can send me an email and we can visit about that. We've been having a lot of issues arise with our students with behavioral needs. We've had some, we've been to the district in the most recent past three to four weeks and that's really on the rise. I sat down myself, John and Melissa, with Matt and Amy Castile, working on a plan of how we can use current district facilities to institute some type of behavioral room where we can educate these kids. The board's talked about it several times over the past year. Mr. Reedenhour is, is working to get us some space. And if you didn't remember that, Scott, you're working to get us some space. But I know Matt's visited with Scott. And we're trying to look at current structures, how that's gonna work, try to alleviate some of the behavioral needs in the buildings and try to get more intensive instruction for those kiddos that need that. So expect over the next couple of weeks, next month, to get more information on how we can make that work. And we're looking at logistics, cost estimates, things of that nature, and we're gonna provide you more information there. I did wanna mention the PIN form. I really don't have a PIN form, a problem issue need form when you come to board policy. So if you look there at me to update, you'll see the PIN problem. I'm presenting this to you because I received an email from a very well-educated student, very intelligent, her email was very well-written, stating her concerns with, by graduating at semesters, she has to forfeit, I guess, is that a good word? A forego, honors recognition. Currently, she has over a four-point-oh. And if you read that policy, I've highlighted the word eight semesters. And if someone graduates early, they're not fulfilling eight semesters, they're going seven semesters. So because of this policy, this student would not be able to graduate highest honors, even though the student has earned those honors. So you see, I've listed here for you the policy IKC. You will see her email to me, my email back, conversations with Dr. Freeman. And I don't wanna speak for her, but this really has become an issue when students are allowed to have that, that algebra credit out of the junior high. We're doing great things for kids, but it speeds up their ability to, to get all their required credits. So her counselors, I think, ran into this last year.
Well, last year was the first year it really became an issue because we have English one at the junior high now. We have to have our credits of English to get college prep diploma. And so last year, we had two seniors who earned a college prep diploma, even though they graduated early, both started college in January as exactly what they should have done. And so we had two students who, who earned it and assumed they were going to receive the highest honors accolade at graduation. And we'd never had that happen before. So counselors didn't advise them of anything different. Well, I was gonna take that away from them in April. There was no way when I was made aware of the situation. But I went to our registrar, I brought board policy forward and I said, we have to make sure that next year, if we have early graduates and when they apply, that they are well aware that this is board policy. And so this young lady came to me right away in maybe even August. I showed her the board policy, told her that where we, I would not break board policy this year, but I felt terrible because she has earned it and she chose to appeal to Dr. Corman and wrote a beautiful email. She is a very intelligent young woman and we're gonna see this more and more and these students are ready to go. And great for them. I mean, that's exactly what we want for them, is to be able to pursue their dreams as early as possible and if they're ready to go midway through senior year, then that's fantastic. So that's where we sit.
So we have two options.
Are we gonna consider this the first reading?
You can, according to policy, yes. Typically, we would take it to the policy committee. My concern is we're gonna run out of time before we can get this change prior to graduation at semester. And it would be very simple to add a blurb, you know, unless you have been selected and approved to graduate early and you've maintained a such and such grade point average. It would be simple to modify this or I don't wanna just put seven semesters.
No.
You know, we can't do that. We just need to address in there an early graduating. But again, we can, according to board policy, this could be first reading. I can bring it back to you and have some revised language where you consider in October.
And that's still sufficient time to deal with it.
That is correct. And if you have any questions in October, we can bring it back in November and then.
And still.
Get it approved and still have time. So that's what we'll do. I'll have Bethans down there writing me a note now, so. And I believe that that was kinda close to the bottom of everything I wanted to cover. I close, because I'm still scrolling to the bottom to see if there's anything else. But those were the main issues, I think, that we needed to talk about this evening and bring those to your attention.
Okay. We'll move on then to the facilities and grounds report with Director Best.
Good evening, everyone. All right, just a recap of what I sent you in the packet. Clearly, you can tell, we're pretty well looking. We looked at a lot of safety issues this past month, as you can tell. We've looked at the sidewalk issues where it's trip hazards. We had a lot of them at high school. Still have a few more at the front of the, of the building to work on. That's one of the big things that we've seen. Movement at the junior high was addressed last month. We have been monitoring them, as we've all told you. We went back to make sure that we breathe them correctly, everything's good. We're not seeing anything yet. We haven't called in Hillsboro Land and Survey yet to verify the land procedures, but I'm sure they will be in soon because they usually do it about once a year. So, so this is where we're at on that. Handrails have added also, thanks to Scott and his team again. They're always looking out for safety as well. So down by the pavilion, as you know, they've added a sidewalk through there years ago. And we had some issues come about that caused the student almost fall off of that with the wheelchair issue. So we've built handrails now, so that won't happen. Put gutters above it so you can actually get anyone getting wet, too. So we, again, we're looking at that and thanks to Scott and his team keeping us up as far on that. The Apex system at the primary still continues to struggle with us and with lots more fans and stuff, but all put back together again. Again, teachers are really hanging in there tough with us. I'm good. So, but it's been challenging, but the weather's helping us now, so hopefully that'll be good. But they are up and running again, so. Playground, we do have a couple of platforms out there that they're not safety issues to say as falling through or anything like that. We wanna bring it to you so you know about it. They're just basically having to be resurfaced so the kids can't get hurt or, you know, can't meet or something like that, so. And then the plate, the work orders, we did about two-thirty, I think it was. So we did okay, you know, speaking up and all that kinda safety thing. We're working with each building to try to keep everything safe and going forward with that. I did wanna say one thing that I did on the inspections that I did notice this past week or two. I wanted to say as well is Kim Jackson's team did an outstanding job. They did get all their checks on their health department, health department, and they all passed with fine colors. So all the kitchens are good, it looks like. So I wanted to tell you about that because Kim doesn't usually get up there, so. So I wanted to tell you that one. There and there, pretty well, that's where we stand in most far safety issues and everything seems to be going well. Just watching that, putting feet signs up, trying to get the public and the children to slow down a little bit on the lawn hall. Since we got that nice paved area announced, a little smoother, so we'll have to watch that. But there and there, that's all we got. Any questions?
Is this the, the rigging inspection you got on here?
Yes, that is a rigging inspection.
Is this ours?
Yes.
Because it says it's Clayton's.
Okay, well, we sent a new update. Unfortunately, it didn't get voted. It does say Clayton School District, but it actually is ours.
Mr. Flack.
She just got the header card, I guess, when she did it the first time. So Donna sent us the right one back and everything. And we are looking at, a gentleman did that inspection. They're looking at working up a cost bulk to fix some of those issues that we may have those do, argued correctly, done. So they're looking at quoting that far as we'll have that information as we go forward.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next report is from Director Kathy.
Hi.
Technology?
We had two-hundred-and-thirteen completed work orders. We got all those new Chromebooks set up and ready to go and delivered to the high schools, so that is really nice. And with Ames Web Testing, we had to update all the computers in the primary, elementary, intermediate. The Chromebooks update automatically, which is really nice. But we ran into an issue with the iPads at the primary. But we ran into an issue with the iPads at the primary, they're only iPad 2s, and the new test navigator didn't work on the iPad 2s. So then we took some Chromebooks from the high school to the primary so that they could get their testing completed. De-freeze console. In the past, we have a way of administering de-freeze. And de-freeze is what allows us, when someone goes in and changes a screensaver, when it restarts, it automatically brings it back to its original state, so we don't have to worry about things being changed on computers. Well, we had, it's called an admin console, and that was set up on Steve's old desk. And so we were actually able to migrate all that data. It actually took a lot of work. We had to get an engineer involved and migrated to a separate computer that's local in the office, so anyone has access to it, which is really nice. We had an issue with the radios. They were reporting some problems receiving and transmitting, and it ended up being the duplexer filter, which controls the amount of noise going across the radio. And that actually got replaced yesterday. And Erin did a training class on networking and active directory. And probably the thing I'm really excited about the most is we have our new inventory system finally up and ready to go. We've been taking this inventory for the past year, and we've been keeping it in a Google Sheet. Well, we got a program that was free, and with this new program, it allows us to search by items, building, room. We can put the warranties in there, we can upload the invoices. So when we purchase an item, we can put the price in there, upload the invoice. So anytime I pull on that item, I can actually pull up the invoice, too. It allows us to check in, check out devices, show the repairs that have been made on it, and it'll let us show where we disposed of the item as well. So it's a really, really good tracking system, so we're really excited about that. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, our financial report, Miss Lynn.
If you take a look at the financial report, we're pretty consistent. So most months, we're running about the same as we did the prior year. If you do notice, revenue was a little higher this month than last year at the same time. That is because of the timing of when we received some rebates on our bonds. We probably received them in September last year instead of August, so that's the difference in the revenue there. But other than that, everything looks great, as predicted. We had our auditors in right after every day. They came in and visited with us and got all their work done for the audit. We've been finalizing a few things with them, such as our FDR records, the final expenditure reports that are due on our title programs and on our IDEA. We got the title programs in today, and Matt and I are going to get the IDEA set in tomorrow. So we're doing good on that. My plan is to get the audit to you in November, so that you have time to review it, and then you can approve it in December. I'm not sure which month the auditor can make it, but either way, if he can talk to you and give him your report, it's probably acceptable, because I think you want more time to review that, that's very likely. So that's the plan. As far as revenue, we'll be approving the tax rate later in the meeting. And that will allow us to collect enough revenue based on the budget that I projected back in when we approved it in June. So it'll support our budget, and I use a collection rate of 92.5% on that. Typically, we come in better, but that's going to depend on delinquent taxes and just how everything flows in, so. Other than that, anything else? Any questions?
Okay, the last report. I don't know if our student advisors have anything. Okay, very good.
Yep. You guys have a very little.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to start with the crosswalk at Leon Hall and Parkway in Business 21. So during the first couple of weeks of school, I've seen a lot of students walking across, like trying to cross the road there. And as many of you may know, there is no stop, like there is no crosswalk there at all. It's a risk, because when it's green, it's green. And if you have people turning left, people turning right, there's not a really designated time for people to walk. So there's constantly kids like jumping and trying to avoid the cars, so I see, it's a safety hazard. So I know Business 21 isn't district property, for say, so I was going to ask for your guys' permission before. I went to city council, because I think it's an issue that needs to be handled as soon as possible for safety of our students. So that was that one. Oh, also a right turn lane at that same spot, because in the mornings, we all know, school traffic between our buses and students and parents backs up really bad there. So also adding a right-hand turn lane in the process, which would also let us redo the area to add that crosswalk in.
I see a lot of smiles. That's a great idea.
Yeah, really. Let us know. I'll be happy to join you at the city council meeting.
And then I also put in the note that I know that, like, because we had that new stoplight there, and the drainage system just got put in there like two years ago or something like that. I know that would have to be moved in order for them to put that lane in, but it's for the safety concerns, so that was my big thing there.
Sure, we 100% agree, and we've dealt with this. Actually, we presented to the board, Ray, do you remember when that was? 2013, 14 maybe? 2014, on the second phase of the city with the east-west gateway proposal. At that time, it was not approved. So unfortunately, all of the second phase was put in. And the issue with that turn lane is, of course, we would have to purchase some of the property in order to put the lane in, and then we'd have to pay to move the light, so. But I love the crosswalk idea, but hey, if you can get that done, that would, that's, we'd like to see that.
Right.
I'd like to see a crosswalk.
I thought it was a skywalk. I'm like, that's a little expensive.
Be a lot safer.
If I may address the board and Ben's here comment on. Through the city Hillsboro, there is a base three, which will bring a sidewalk in front of the intermediate. And at that time, they are looking at putting a crosswalk across right at the upper part of that lane there. So it is in the works a little bit through the city Hillsboro.
Sweet. Do they have a timeframe on that, Ray? Do they have a timeframe?
Uh, they're, right now, at this time, Gary's saying the box for this early spring. Base three is supposed to start already, back in August. Of the funding and some issues they ran into, it has now been pushed to probably about April, I think.
Hey, Ray, if Ben wanted to be a part of that committee, who would he reach out to?
Probably Gary or Cody, maybe Joe. I can get him in contact with if you'd like.
Well, I think it'd be a great idea to still present.
I do, too. I was going to say, don't still, I would.
Still go.
And I'll be there. And, you know, maybe the idea of the right-hand turn lane could be incorporated, because if that was, I know that plan was started a long time ago, right? I mean, I don't know.
There's a couple of other things, too. We did allow the administration to know about there today. Virginia and I have been working surveying for a while. The light signal issue we're talking about, we are addressing it with the city after we get the packet together, based on times, readjusting calculations and so forth. Because they actually own the operation of the box and everything, we just have to pay for it. But they actually own it. We are in the works of doing that, as well as also looking at what cost structure would be. They had a left light coming out of Leon Hall going to the north. That would also pose some of the traffic off the Ben's talking about. That would allow left traffic to go first. Traffic coming from State Drive would be halted for just a little while. And then making that turn, that will free up on that as well. We have not got that package completed yet. Virginia and I are still working on it. Once we have done that, we will address it up front first, and then address it with the city Hillsboro. So, good luck.
Thank you. The next thing we have is allowing homeschool students participate in HSDR3 activities. So a recent issue popped up with a high school student who wanted to participate in the school musical, but he was denied a chance since he recently decided to come homeschool, like right before school year started. I was homeschooled, like I was a homeschool kid, so I kind of understand the aspect of how it worked, like kind of. Because I get that students have to have the six credit-bearing classes through MSHA in order to compete, so to say. But technically, our drama club isn't a competing group, because we don't go to competitions, and we don't. So I know it's like too late for him to get in, but he was wondering if he could do tech, so that needs board approval allowed. But the other thing I had was, oh, let me see, all right, okay. But I said that the students' parents are living within the district, which they are, and paying taxes to our district, which also helps fund the district. They should at least have a chance to do those things and participate if they want. Kylie also added the note that if they did participate, could also have the chance of them eventually enrolling into the district instead of deciding to stay homeschooled, so they can be with their friends all day. And also, because they'd have that more community base, instead of just being at home all day, you know. Also, some of those kids are very talented, so why not give them the chance to show their talents and prove their talents in that area, lead hawk blue like the rest of us, you know?
The next one we're going to talk about is the parking lot passes. I'm sure you guys have probably heard about. They are very expensive. We pay $40 for our parking lots here, which if you look, Jefferson College parking passes are only $10. DeSoto's only 15, Festus are 25, and we're 40. Students don't really know where exactly that money goes. They're not really well-informed of it. So what we would like is to have our prices reduced, like dramatically. Please. Like, some students actually pay for their parking lot passes themselves, because like parents don't have the funds. And like students will, we work, but we also have school stuff, and we don't want to exactly have to worry about being 40 dollars for parking passes at the beginning of the year. So what we're trying to suggest is that we bring the prices down to 15, and students will be required to purchase a single parking pa, or parking spot with their number on it. And we also want to see if it'd be okay with you guys if we could decorate our parking spots. Painting them, making it our own type thing. It would like make people want to purchase them, because it's like your own thing. It's like a really fun thing, get your personality out on the parking lot. It's just, it'd be fun for everybody.
It's a strange spot, too.
Yeah, and if you look, we put pictures of what some other parking spots look like.
Also adding on to that, the misinformation also is causing students to not want to purchase or to stray away from purchasing the passes, because they're like, well, I don't know what the money's going to. Why am I going to give my money to something I don't know where it's going to?
Well, I would encourage you guys to work with Mrs. Freeman and find out where that money's going. And that might give you a better understanding of why it's $40. But through that conversation, you guys might have an opportunity to discuss that price and see if there's an opportunity to lower it. But I would definitely talk to your administrators on that pricing and where it's going first. And it may be going to some needs or some opportunities that you're just not aware of. But I would definitely schedule that meeting with her first. Yeah, and then if there's an opportunity to lower it, then I would bring it back to us. But I like the paint idea. I, you know, whenever I go into my office every day, it's mine. I have my picture where I want it. It has my personality. It makes it fun to go into work. I mean, as much fun as it can be, right? So I do like the idea. I know there's school districts and surrounding districts doing that, and I think it's a wonderful idea. There'd have to be, in my opinion, some policy around that or direction, process approving the artwork and the rovingage first, things like that.
What would you do for the next year, though?
It would have to be repainted. That would have to be part of the process as well, I would assume.
I would think your parking pass may maybe have to go up to help pay for the bounty.
Well, they have to pay for the paint themselves, right? Yeah, that's what you're suggesting. Yeah, and then you have to paint it over for the next kid coming in.
Here's some homework for you. Reach out to those other school districts. Find out what their policies are and what the repainting procedures are. Find out if maybe that parking pass, $15, does that include this, or is this an additional charge for them to paint them? So I would go find out what other districts are doing, find their policies, and give more information, and present that to the sixth floor, too.
And are those fees that you shared, is that for the year or for the semester?
It's for the year.
Okay.
If you can make the closer ones for, further you get away from the building.
Yeah, maybe it's premium parking and then further away.
Have you discussed any of this with your administrators?
We've brought up the idea a few times. It wasn't really talked about in depth that much. But we've brought up the idea.
Of which part?
The reducing the parking prices.
But when we talked about it.
Aren't you proud? I am so proud of them.
Yeah.
I have not spoken to them about this, and I have known this wasn't the agenda. So I did my due diligence. I am maintaining, I will.
I know last time.
I'm very proud of you for bringing it up, I guess, but I have all kinds of information for you.
Right. I know briefly we talked about it. Instead of doing it like just reducing the prices, we talked about doing a grade point reduction, so if you had like a 4.0 GPA, you could get so much off.
Renaissance cards.
I like your Renaissance cards.
Just for your perk.
That's what we said, DeSoto's $15, I'm thinking that's connected with Renaissance cards.
Mrs. Freeman, can you share?
Go ahead and share with what, so we know?
What the money is used for?
Yeah, yeah, what on fund it goes to.
It goes into the activities account, the only student activities account that the high school office has for students. So whereas other buildings have an opportunity to fundraise through other means, like a Cepeda sale, Scott, and, you know, other types of fundraisers, this is really the primary fundraiser that we have. The athletics department has a few fundraisers that they are able to raise some funds with, but this is our primary activity account fund, and everything spent out of that account goes for the kids. So it's like, we subsidize the quarterly incentives, they pay $6 to go to FX6, but we pick up the rest of the tab, because we want to keep those incentives minimal. We pay for classroom incentives every time we feed them, whether it's with pizza last year, donuts, or whatever. We pay for those things, spirit bracelets this year. Then we pay for the student council lunches, all the awards and certificates. We also scholarship a lot of students in the classes that have materials fees. We have a lot of kids who don't have the money for those, so they just fill out a form and we scholarship those. We scholarship dance tickets quite frequently. So just, that's, everything spent out of the activity account is directly for the kids. So that's what that goes with, too. I do want to stress that fundraising is not the primary reason why we want our kids to buy a parking permit. The primary reason is we really need to have all of our vehicles authorized to be parking on our lots. It's a student lot. We have some vendor vendors every single year. And oftentimes, those vendor vendors occur with cars that we do not know who they belong to. Then Jeris has to run your plates, and then it's a whole big deal. So that's our primary thing, opportunity is just to make sure that they're all authorized. We don't give them assigned spots anymore. That stopped two years ago, and that's because Mr. Groder and I had determined that there were so many kids not parking in their spots, and you cannot really read the numbers anymore. So we thought we would just try this. If it's not working, we'll go back to something different. That's fine. And as far as the schools go, they're right, except that DeSoto just started charging for parking last year, and they didn't want to shock their kids, so they started with that amount. But they're planning on raising their prices, and I talked to the Festus principal, and she's planning on raising their prices, too. So now we go to Windsor, it's $40, Foxy, $40, go to Melville and Oakville, and you're talking, it was $220, they lowered theirs to $100. So, no way.
That's about $4. That's about $4 a month.
I love the idea of painting the parking lot, and actually, several sponsors have asked us if they could use that as a means to fundraise. I talked to Ray about it a little bit this summer. It's just a logistical thing. So do we want to do it? Is it, what would be the process? How do we make sure that what is painted is approved, using approved products, all of those things?
Repainting. I would find out how other schools are doing it, bring back that information to them.
You know, that's only about four, a little over $4 a month.
Yeah.
You know, if the $40, if the $40 is a big thing, maybe.
So it's $20 a semester. If you graduate early, you get a refund. If you're a late driver, so you don't get your license until halfway through or three quarters way through, we pro-rate. And any student that can't afford them, we stress and stress and stress. Do not worry about the money. Come register your car. We can put you on a payment plan. We can work it out. That is not a problem. We've got kids paying $1 a week. We've got kids paying $5 a week, whatever that you can do. We just want to make sure their cars are authorized. And if you didn't hear us talk about that in depth at the senior class meeting, I would apologize. But I know when we went into all the social studies classes with the freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, that was a big portion of what we presented to them. And it's really, a lot of kids are complaining this year, and the reason why is because we're holding their feet to the fire like we've never done before. So in the past, a lot of kids were parking on our lots unauthorized. We don't, we don't charge fines. We don't ticket you. A lot of school districts, if you read their handbooks. A lot of school districts, if you read their handbooks, they're fined if they're having unauthorized spots, if they don't have a sticker, including some of the schools you looked into. So if you park in the wrong spot, you're fined five dollars. If you don't have a sticker and it's the third check, it's going to cost you thirty bucks, whereas the parking sticker would have cost you fifteen. And a lot of those schools also have a minimum grade point average of two-point-oh. We don't have that currently. I love the idea of using the Renaissance cards. And we do donate some of our parking spots to Project Crumb to give out for free, too, to raffle off in the spring. But one of the other things is that it's just really important that the kids' schools' cars are authorized on the lot. And so before, we weren't necessarily doing the greatest job of making sure and enforcing it, and now we are. You can't go with your car during the day to get an item unless you've purchased a parking sticker. Or you come in and talk to us so that we can give you a parking sticker and at least have your car authorized. So we started the process, we have the paperwork. You can't get a parking lot pass if you go to the parking lot anymore. And we're doing checks every so many weeks. So we're holding our feet to the fire. That's why we have a lot more people going, "Why are you getting held accountable now?" So I can understand that.
Okay. I'm going to cut it short.
Can I ask a question? The homeschool students, I thought there were items that homeschool students could be, besides athletics.
Talk about that area. It's only an agenda this evening.
Yeah. Okay. We don't want to talk about that. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, really. Fantastic ideas.
Great ideas, but I might add one thing, that some of these things probably should go through Mrs. Freeman first because that long, really good explanation could have helped.
Take care of it.
Yeah. I mean, but the ideas are great and we appreciate your efforts, okay?
Thank you for that because with us, we'll be able to communicate that with the kids and hopefully they'll solve a lot of the issues.
Absolutely.
No complaints.
I appreciate, we know now, too.
Yeah, I do, too. Always kind of wondering where the money went to.
Looking forward to hearing more because we didn't know that. Okay. We're going to move on then. We don't have any unfinished business, so we'll move on to the new business of the night. The first item is to set the tax rate for the 2017-18 school year. We had our hearing this evening and Mrs. Gins presented to us. If you want to give a couple of highlights so that the rest of the audience can maybe hear what we discussed, that's fine. And tell them, you know, what we've done and what we're proposing as our tax rate.
Absolutely. So when I calculate the tax rate every year, it's a tax form, basically. I get the numbers from the state auditor's office, from the county assessor's office to plug in, and then they go back to the state auditor's office and they verify all the numbers. We have in our incidental fund, the first line up there you see, the state tells us, "You have to levy this. You can't levy more than this dollar amount." So when I calculated the levy this year, it actually was lower by about thirteen cents than the previous year. So that's great for taxpayers. That also means that our assessed valuation grew this year a lot. We have people building new homes and we would be capturing more revenue than what the law allows, so that's why we levy thirteen cents less than what we did last year. And we can split that levy between the incidental fund and the capital projects fund. So we're wanting to put a nickel in the capital projects fund out of that just to keep some money there if there's some projects that we need to get taken care of. As far as the debt service levy goes, that levy is based on the debt that the school has. Again, it's another calculation and you put in the payments that you have to make for the current year and you can hold a reserve of one year for the payments that you have to make for the next year. That levy actually came out to about two dollars and we are electing to roll that back to a dollar, a dollar point oh-oh-nine-three. So we are collecting a little more revenue in that fund this year because our financial advisors would like to see a little bit more money sitting there just because that's what they advise the clients. So overall, our levy is about seven cents lower than last year. So that's great for our taxpayers who have past the bond issue. The rate we're proposing is four point six one eight-five and that is all those funds.
Which is less than last year.
Correct.
Okay. So with that said, I need a motion to set the tax rate for the 2017-2018 as proposed. Thank you. Any other thoughts or discussion? We're going to talk this one to death this evening. Okay. All in favor? Raise your hand. Very good. Next item has to do with the proposed building projects and renovations. And I think we were given a handout and Arc Images is here this evening to discuss some of those changes.
Good evening and thank you. Roy Mangan with Arc Images. Wanted to come before the board tonight and bring you back some information based on some of the information you had requested us to have at our last workshop. So I might start, I've given you guys a PowerPoint presentation as of, we finished doing that together as of this afternoon, so it's pretty current. If I might, I'd like to go ahead and start with the next slide, please. What I want to talk to you tonight about is the Board of Education assignment that we had from our nine-fourteen meeting. In the discussion, it boiled down to trying to balance out some of the work that was being done in the three major schools, the primary, the elementary and the junior high. We had talked about reducing the elementary classroom addition by three classrooms and creating an addition of three classrooms instead of six. And in doing that, we are trying, we were trying to get the junior high science classrooms to be upgraded, along with some repairs to the wall that is associated to that. And so I would like just to very quickly walk you through the plans that we had shown earlier on the next slide. This is the primary school and we have been working with Dr. Wallace on her layouts, particularly in the areas of the administration up in the front, which is your keynotes six and eight, nine and ten in that area. And we've done some preliminary box diagrams, showed those to her, and we feel comfortable that we can meet her needs to get the information in those locations. So we feel very comfortable that what you see in front of you is the agenda moving forward for the primary school and feel that we've got the program that had been agreed to covered in that particular instance. If you go to the next slide, it will be the elementary school. As you can see, on the left side is our upper floor plan. We took off the three classrooms there and have had conversations with Dr. Tui about those and were able to get the classrooms that she is meeting right now in the yellow highlighted area on the lower level plan to the right. And we feel that given what you see in front of you, we'll take care of the plans that we have for the elementary. And then if you jump to the next slide for the junior high, if you notice keynote number fourteen of the upper portion of that and off to the side, we have included the upgrading of the four science classrooms. And then number fifteen was the stabilization of that rear wall. So by not doing the classrooms in the elementary, we were able to get the science labs in that one wall taken care of there. So we feel very comfortable that I think in the overall junior high, we've accomplished the items that everybody has been asking us to do and feel that we're well-covered in that fashion. The next slide is, as we discussed in our last workshop, the high school. We understand that there are some needs that we were having to do there. Now, those are not in this current budget, but they give you an idea that there's an alternate or some additional funding where we come about. That's what we are looking at to do on the high school. So that takes care of really based on our conversations and our interviews with the administration at each of the levels of where we're headed and what we would suggest doing based on our last board meeting and the changes that we made today. If we go to the next slide, I want to just touch on some of the budget framework. We have adjusted this slightly, gave us some information from Dr. Forman and worked our way through this, what we call a program budget. And what our dollars that we have allocated for the construction value is now at nine point three-eight million to work in the construction aspect of it, given the different categories that you see there on the different amounts that we want to hold outside of that from the twelve million. So as you can see, we started that twelve and worked our way up the page to get that nine point three. Going to the next slide, it kind of gives you a little bit of a breakdown based on what we showed you guys last time. We're in the primary school, elementary school and junior high school. All have the dollar amounts that we have shown on each of the preceding pages. They add up to that nine point three million. Again, we have a twelve percent contingency that we're holding into those program numbers. So at this early stage, we are trying to hold that money so we make sure that we're safe moving forward. The unfortunate part is with some of the updates we've done to the other categories, right now we're carrying a delta of zero dollars in there for the filming cameras and access controls, which we talked in our last board meeting workshop. We're going to need some money from alternate sources to do those. Those are things that I think we can break apart and do on a yearly basis if we really utilize some of the capital from maybe the land payments or any of those types of things that the board looks at. But that would be allowing us to then take the three schools and get the work really needed to be done in those particular locations. And then if the market's fair to us and we don't use a lot of contingency, we can start to utilize some of those film camera access components at each of the locations. So that's kind of how it's laid out. The next slide, we kind of put together just so that you can kind of see, we are still working on the four categories that we talked about from day one all the way through the bond issue. The learning and wellness, we're adding sixteen classrooms. The weight and fitness facility, winter installation. Throughout the number of school locations, the nurse facility upgrades and then the science lab upgrades for learning and wellness. In the co-compliance category, we are addressing the A B A restrooms as we discussed in our workshop. For all of the schools get touched, but not all of the restrooms get taken care of. It's just a matter of spreading that out and getting the best ones done first. Safety and security, we're looking at the security vestibles, the administrative suite relocations, and then if possible, we're looking at the access controls, cameras and the films if money allows it at the end of this process. Technology and maintenance, we understand the intercom valve system in some locations and some of the H V A C upgrades. So we do feel that we're still covering as much as we can with the funds that are available. It's just that we're trying to allocate those based on what we heard you guys in your comments.
I see a difference in the, for the junior high. Your diagram says four point one-two million and on the current scope budget sheet, you got four point seven-nine. Some come up with less than three hundred and twenty-five thousand. You've got three hundred and eight thousand.
Wait, are you not including the twelve percent contingency?
No. I'm sharing this drawing that you...
Is this the one we just handed out?
Yes. Yeah. This page says four point eight.
No, I just handed a new one out this morning. We caught that error earlier.
The new one's on the keyboard right there. Very good.
Yeah, so we, yeah, caught that on the junior high. We'll be right there. So I guess I'm here tonight to kind of deliver that message and then also ask for the board's confirmation to proceed forward because as we talked last, we would like to put together a comprehensive schedule based on tonight's approval to move forward and then get you guys back that information and then start setting up some meetings with the schools.
Could you clarify something?
Sure.
I thought that the fund we were starting for Highway A was going to be coming from the money regarding say, but there's money in this for Highway A.
Correct. But we did not have enough to cover the cost of paying all of Highway A. We have a little over nine hundred and it's going to take close to a million more.
Okay.
That's what we were talking about. We were around that six hundred, seven hundred, a hundred thousand mark, but due to last year, now when you look at the prices of bonds, selling property, costs, issuance, things of that nature, it has driven up the cost of A. So that's why last time, when we talked about this, I sent the email today. If you compare to your last paperwork and Mrs. Welker pointed this out, that we had, you see that less three hundred and four thousand down here on this page here?
Go back to the page.
Well, that went to cover a couple of things. One, they were a little low in their initial proposal as we were beginning a year ago to pass the bond issue. They had twenty-three and we spent around fifty-three, so some had come out of there. The rest of that, we're pushing to the Highway A property because they had six hundred thousand listed. We want to be sure we have enough in there to cover everything. They're projecting close to one point eight million by the time you get everything taken care of. And then our hope is to use those leftover payments from this year to push toward the access film or any other areas that we need. And I want Roy, if you don't mind, to point a clarification. Any of the monies that, this is fluid.
Yes.
And based upon what expenditures, how that could not be as high, we could push any of that money toward our access cameras and film.
No question. No question. As we start to get into the buildings and understand how the details and all of that stuff works, if we can save some money in certain areas and devote it towards those, we certainly will be doing that. But at this point, it's based on some averages.
But realistically, too, it could also...
It could be high.
It could. And what we would do then is we'd start to look at the components and decide, back to you guys, what we want to do and what we don't want to do.
So will this be an enclosed bid when we open them or how does that?
You opened to the constructed documents.
Basically what happens is we would set up our documents and then we would submit those out to the bidding market, okay? And in schoolwork, you submit those out to those that can be bonded to do the work with the dollar amounts. We would then receive those bids, open them up at a board meeting so that it's read publicly, and then we would take those bid documents and verify those and qualify that the contractors are hold and then come back and we'll give a recommendation to the board tires, contractor X, Y, Z.
Bid bonds, I mean, things that would be expected.
There will be bid bonds and there will be performance and payment bonds that we're going to associate to. We'll probably more than likely have prevailing wage. I mean, there's a lot of things that we put into the schools when they go through that bid process. And we'll bring you guys up to speed on all of those as we start to get closer to the bidding.
So are you all going to take care of certifying the payroll, make sure that it is paid correctly?
There'll be certified payrolls that'll be required from the contractors and stuff. So we'll do all of that stuff with you guys. We're getting started.
But we have to do something else. We need a couple of days to take care of tonight before we get to that process.
Which is fine. I'm just kind of giving you the report and then we'll come back. Any other questions?
We're looking at questions about the framework here and the new budget on the high school one. With this rework, there's nothing in the high school.
You know, they would be...
That's the resource officer.
Since we put in the film on hold for now, right? The film and the, that'll be kind of later. I kind of always wanted to see the research on what that would do or has it shown to be proven effective? Because I don't know that much about it, but it just, I would love to see that since now we have some time.
I have some at the office. I could just buy it off the middle team and take it.
Three M has a really good website on there, too.
Oh, okay. I could just...
On the Three M website, they show some videos on how people are trying to break into things and end up walking away because they came through.
Okay. Gotcha.
But it's not bulletproof.
No, it is not. It's ballistic.
I know we had that question come up from one of the administrators of, "I thought this was..." Oh, no, that's at the banks and our retarded... You know, it is. No, it's basically it's another layer of buying time to get your kids in your package and safety. That's what it does, is buy time and get your officers there, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So we need to decide what we want to do. Do we want to accept this the way it is and move forward or do you have changes that you want? Or do you have changes that you want to make? Or what?
I think it hit the right spot.
With the science labs? So the changes meet with your approval then, basically?
What we had said to the public.
From the last meeting.
Going into this.
Okay. Everybody else good with that?
Doc, do you think that we could possibly try to create some type of security desk thing for our SRO with school phones outside of the.
Exactly. We might have to wait to see what happens with our SRO to determine if we need to secure this for the SRO. But yes, and I don't think, and I have to, you know, I appreciate these guys' figures, but they have to figure, they're a little bit of a cost and we have to figure. You know, if Ray and his guys build something or we purchase something, it's different than having to do prevailing wage because they're kind of employees that we pay to do that. So and I don't see, the only issue I have is trying to figure out how we structure that in front of all that glazing in the high school. That's going to be, because you have all that glass in the front, where are you going to station this away from the glass? So just some conversations. I did look when I was in the facility about the little table to the left when you walk in because I think that's for our service people, so I kind of hate to take that, but there are some options. So the short of your question, I answered your questions, yes, we can look at it.
Good.
Okay. So I need a motion then to approve the proposed building project.
I need a motion to approve the proposed building project.
Okay. And renovations, I should say that too. And Beth's second. Okay. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor of accepting this proposal? Okay. There you go. You're welcome. Thank you for all your efforts. Okay. Moving on to item C. We have a request for professional development dealing with grading practices. We have some personnel who are requesting to attend the National Sound Grading Practice Conference. We had the summary there. Give me a chance to look at it. Do we need to hear from Melissa by any chance? Did you have any questions for her about in regards to this? Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the request to attend the National Sound Grading Practice Conference? Motion's moved. Thank you. Second?
Sorry.
Thank you. Renee?
That's fine.
Okay. Any other discussion or concerns?
I had a concern that this is also going to overlap with staff being gone for the STUCO advisors. And I know that you were going to select people from various buildings, so.
My plan was to take a secondary administrator, an elementary administrator, and then fill in the gaps for the other buildings with teachers so every building is represented and we can get a wide variety of experiences.
I expected that, but I didn't have that.
We have some grading practices that need to be shored up, some things we've left untied over recent years tonight. And I would also like to mention those people who go will be expected to be part of the focus group along with some other input from teachers to examine some R B testing and those kinds of things throughout the school year.
To bring consistency to what we're doing.
I'm sorry.
To help bring consistency.
Yes, Ben, because we're all moving.
Anything else? Okay. Let's have a show of hands then, who, all in favor to approve this request? Okay. Very good. Thank you. Next item has to do with the surplus sale. We'd like to set up the date to be October 14th. So we need a motion to declare the listing of surplus items and for the auction to be held on October 14th at 9:00.
Make a motion and do that.
Yes. Thank you. Second. Any questions about the sale? I think this, I'm worried pretty much some of it. Okay. All in favor? Raise your hand, please. All right. Okay. Item D, or sorry, E, has to do with the district's beverage partnership. I think Mr. Moreno has some things to share with us in regard to that.
Guys talk to me a lot tonight, I'm sorry.
You're becoming our new favorite.
How does soda machines fall under athletic group?
Everything's an activity, sir.
So we found out late last year, Dr. Isaacson, that we have a contract for our beverage provider, correct? So we opened it up to the two beverage providers that you see there, Coca-Cola and Pepsi. Coca-Cola's been our beverage provider for some time now. However, if you, we talked to them and we talked to Pepsi for this proposal here. Sometimes whenever you open it up for negotiation, you get better offers, this, that, and the other. In working with Dr. Isaacson and Kim Jackson, Kim's here, she's back in the back, I can tell you that based on the proposals that we've seen, we're pretty excited and pretty happy with the proposal the Pepsi company has put forward. If you look at it, they, their prices are very competitive and if not a little cheaper than what Coca-Cola is offering. The monetary value that they're giving us per year is more. The free goods that they've included with that, as well as their pricing, you know, they say that they will go up, I want to hear my numbers right here because I don't want to be wrong.
It's like in year three or something.
It's a quarter in year three and year five, whereas the other vendor says they will go up 5% annually. On the flip side of that as well, I want you guys to understand that we've talked to them about the possibility of doing fountain machines in buildings. However, they had some concerns with that and their concerns were the maintenance, upkeep, upkeep, and sanitariness of keeping those machines up and running correctly, which I completely understand. We, in going through everything with them, I can tell you that they are extremely aggressive with their proposal and they have a lot to offer us, things that we haven't seen before from beverage companies. So my recommendation to the board would be to go with Pepsi. There'll be a transition period, obviously, because we will have to transition from Coke to Pepsi, getting all the machines, but in talking to Daniel Sen, who would be our contact with Pepsi, this can all be done. And a time that I think we would probably shoot for, to be honest with you guys, would be Christmas break, where we could come in and kind of get everything done without disrupting much and switching it out. And I believe I will speak for Ms. Jackson when I say she's pretty excited about this as well. And not to sit here and talk down on anyone, but it's just, it's been a process and it's time to maybe try a new road.
Well, if you look at the two, Pepsi, there was a no-brainer.
Yeah, I think the two proposals speak for themselves and I think everything's on the paper. Sometimes I don't give you guys enough information and tonight I've overloaded you with as much information as I possibly could because I want you to be informed. And I think I've learned that more is better when it comes to that because you guys have a lot of questions and I want to be able to answer those questions, but I also want to be able to, when this packet goes home, you guys look at it and decipher for yourself if you need to answer.
Pepsi owns all of these different brands.
Yes.
Well, whatever we decide, I'm still going to like Cherry Coke better.
You go right there. Well, we used to have Pepsi years ago. Long time ago.
I believe you.
I remember the change. We can talk to them about the fountain machines. Was that for student access?
It was teacher access on there.
Okay.
And it would have been in the teachers' lounges in the various, the five attendance centers we have, six, five, six. We talked about that. It comes down to a deal where they don't necessarily count that product like they do other things. And again, it came down to a cleanliness, sanitary, upkeep type deal because you got to switch it out for carbonation. They don't have ice makers on fountain machines, so you'd have someone that had to constantly load the ice, things of that nature. So while I'd love it, I think it would be great. I think it'd be an instant morale booster, to be honest with you. I just don't know if it's viable. We haven't stopped looking at it. Actually, we talked about it today. It's a possibility. We just got to make sure it's the right fit and it's best for everybody.
I have another question.
Yes.
I didn't look in this enough, but the prices for the students won't change, right?
So currently, we've paid a dollar for a 20-ounce drink for six years now. Both of these companies came back at a minimum of $1.50, so the price would go up 50 cents. And it's $1.75 on the power rate and the smart water, which if you go to a gas station, let's say, a 20-ounce soda, I think is about $1.79. So it's right in line with, a 20-ounce bottle is about, is about $1.79.
So it would have gone up either way?
Absolutely.
Exactly the same.
No matter which company we're going with, however we renew the contract, it's going to go up. And then that's why I said Coke said they would do a 5% increase annually, which comes up to about 7.5 cents if my math in my head is right. Whereas Pepsi says, hey, we're going up a quarter in year three and a quarter in year five. So again, if you do the math, I think you're right there with one.
To me, this was a no-brainer. Okay. I made a motion to go Pepsi. Thank you. So we have a motion to approve the Pepsi partnership? All in favor? Okay.
I will call them tonight. And I will stay right here and visible to you next.
Okay. Right. Which gets us to Director Petrie's question that she had earlier about student eligibility? Oh, no, not yet. I skipped it. Sorry, I was getting ahead of myself. I have to jump back to F. This has to do with the Athletic Directors Conference. We need to approve Mr. Moreno being able to attend this conference in Phoenix. And you are presenting at the end of this year, is that correct?
I will present and I will teach this.
Yeah. And you're on the international.
I'm on the national faculty and on the National Athletic Directors Council that actually sets up the competition.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. And anybody have any thoughts and need to share? Okay. All in favor of approving Mr. Moreno to attend this conference? All right. Very good. Thinking about it. I was thinking ahead. I'm going to change my page again. Okay. This is a new policy on participation of non-traditional students and their eligibility. Do you want to explain to us what's different and how this works?
Sure. So the information that I provided you there in the executive summary, I gave you again all the information so you can see what the difference is between the student options. You have the regular student option, which is a bona fide student, currently enrolled, lives in the district, and attending classes through the high school full-time. You have traditional option one, which is they're transcribed credits. Student may meet the requirements of the first bylaw, but they're enrolled at the high school part-time or some of the time. All our courses that they're taking are through something like our Plato program or GED options or whatnot for eligible. Then you have non-traditional option two, which is for public schools only, which deals with homeschool students who reside within the district, but they have no seat time necessarily within the school district itself. The reason that you have this here before you tonight is Misha, the Missouri State High School Activities Association, this year, everything that you see underlined in what I gave you means it's new to the policy this year. And the reason that Misha has gone new to the policy with what you see is because every year, they have things that come up with Senate bills and House bills for the inclusion of homeschool students, things of that nature. Misha in turn has basically turned it over and said, it's a local school decision. We are the local school, so it is up to us to decide what policy we want to adopt or grow by. We don't really have a policy right now and we have some home school students that want to participate. Doc, I don't know what all I can talk about, so if I get off the topic here, you fix it.
I'm listening.
We've talked to our school's attorney in dealing with some of these issues and going through her recommendations. It was the recommendation that it come to the Board of Education as presented, that we discuss it and then we decide upon policy.
Or procedure.
Or a procedure. And that's why we are where we are right now.
Now, let's draw our attention to 2.34, correct?
Yeah.
So if you want to take your attention to 2.34, Erin, can you take it down a little bit? So start talking there again, Ed, so everyone's with you.
So 2.34, that is your Misha bylaw, which talks about how students gain their eligibility for Misha activities. Misha activities are your sports, require, your band, speech and debate, things of that nature. So a traditional option is the student meets the requirements outlined in 2.3.2, which says they're a bona fide student, they reside within the district, they attend class within the district all day, and they meet the requirements of, they're either, they're enrolled in six credit-bearing classes and they pass six credit-bearing classes the semester before. They are basically, in layman's terms, 100% of the time, they're in our buildings, attending school in our school. Okay? If you go to B, which is non-traditional option one, that could be a student where it looks like they come here for a couple hours a day, two to three hours a day, and they have some seat time. And they also have, I'm going to use things like Plato, GED options, or maybe they're even going to the junior college and they're taking classes out there, that are then going on their high school transcript that count towards their graduation and they will receive a diploma from Hillsborough High School. Make sense so far? And then non-traditional option two is seat time, but non-transcribed credits, meaning the student may come here for one or two hours a day, everything else is taken.
On seat. This is seat.
We're on seat, I'm sorry.
Number two.
We're on seat now, which is non-traditional option two. The student's enrolled, public school of residence, maybe takes one unit of credit. We confirm that they have the one unit of credit. We have to do a full academic review as well, going over what they've taken as a homeschool student, making sure it aligns with our curriculum, and then you either approve or deny that. With that being said, we, on the, on that option there, they don't have to be here 80% of the time, they don't have to meet the eligibility requirements of Misha and so forth. And we have no control, unfortunately, if something were to happen behaviorally. We really don't have control in that aspect with what happens, if that makes sense.
What do you mean though? You mean because they're not in the school, they're at home? Or you mean when they're here in an activity?
Kind of both.
I mean, it would be the same as any other student.
They're not our student.
They're not our student. I mean, if they were, well, what are you, if they were acting out violently or something, what would you would call them? I mean, I don't understand.
No, no, I don't necessarily mean that. I mean, let's say they decide to, they break some policy or they do something on social media or something where we have nothing.
Wouldn't they still, couldn't we put in the policy though that they have to abide by the same guidelines in the handbook that we have our other students abiding by?
But you have no enforcement of that because they're not students.
Well, the enforcement comes in the policy already standing, that if they were behaving wrong or they posted something bad on social media, that we would do the same that we would do to the other student. It would limit their activity.
Apply to enrolled students, alright.
And the flip side of that is this, and this is something that Dr. Urhan talked about at our area meeting, that Dr. Freeman and I just attended in Farmington, and that was that if we were to review their transcripts and say we're going to accept their credits, and then when Dr. Freeman, help me out here, make sure you get this right, by the time they became a senior, they could come to us and say, hey, you've accepted all my credits, I'd like a diploma from the high school. So that was something, a concern that Dr. Urhan had, that he wanted the local school to be.
Which we do have more policy on how many credits a student's supposed to earn from our school before they actually graduate to the Hillsborough High School.
But on a standard perspective, if you accept them, then they're yours. And I think that's what his point was, correct?
Currently, if we had an athlete, a student athlete who got caught drinking, we can have a discipline, I mean, we can discipline that, correct?
Absolutely.
What about this kind of student?
It's such a gray area. Mr. Harskey, I don't know how to exactly answer that because there's so many factors that go into it. And that was some of the concerns we shared with Mrs. Brazier when we talked to her on the phone about that they're just, they're not our student.
Well, I mean, if a student was drinking and, and perhaps say what you just brought up, I'm sure that they would lose privileges to play the sport, right? Our student would.
Our student, yeah.
Yeah, but wouldn't we do the same thing to a homeschool student? I mean, what would be the big deal with that? They would have to abide by the same rules that we have. They would have to abide by the same rules that we have in policy already.
Well, discipline can go beyond a sport or activity. It can go through seasons, it could go through years. And the whole point is to re- explicitly, discipline for the safe and good order of the district. Well, if someone is a homeschool student, then they don't have to abide by the discipline. They just say, okay, I'm going home. Or, I don't have to, I don't have to do that discipline, or I'm fine, I'm restitution, if I break something, I just won't...
Well, they would also lose what they were hoping to achieve, which would be to participate in the activity.
But we allow homeschool students to participate in accordance with the law in anything which they earn a grade in. We're talking about extracurricular activities here.
Right.
And for example, I know we had a student in the intermediate last year that had access to general athletic curriculum. If you're given a grade, then they can participate if they so choose. In that particular instance, a student, I believe rode the bus as well, was gonna come to school on the bus, but was gonna have three hours of wait time before the course actually started. We denied that because we're not, by law, we don't have to provide supervision of that student. But when they're at school, we do. And then I believe that student rode the bus home. There's been several instances where a homeschool student can access if it's given, we're giving a grade. It goes back to Ben's question of how come the student couldn't participate? And after discussion with myself, Mr. Moreno, and Dr. Freeman, well, ultimately, our belief is that those activities are for the students of the district that are enrolled in the district. And we didn't want to take other opportunities away from students that are currently enrolled that want to participate, they're now losing a slot to the student. That's technically not enrolled as a student. So that was our, correct? Our whole point of getting to that. And then speaking with the attorney, the whole point was, when you're supervising kids, you're providing discipline and keeping the good order, it's tough to do that if they're a homeschool kid.
I know, but I think, are we talking about just an extracurricular? If they are, if they are not abiding by the behavior standards of the activity, then they would lose the ability that you guys would have to say, you can't play the sport. And they would lose that, right?
This goes beyond just sports as well?
But I mean, if we already have them in the, I know it's just a difference of having a grade or not. I mean, when we talk about providing it for the student in the district, these are students that are living in the district, but they are being taught at home. And I mean, it's just, I don't know, I don't know. If you're, if you're able to provide them a class, then I would think they should be able to also participate in an extracurricular.
Also, like I know you said it also takes away an opportunity for a student that might be in the district full-time, but what about your extracurriculars that are already lacking students in general? Like I know soccer this year, we had, we had a chance with JV boys where we were lacking players, so we had to make calls out to kids to come and show up to practice, so they could have enough kids on the roster.
But it's a Misha activity that governs a homeschool student's participation at this point. That's what we're discussing here tonight. So it's not about lacking participation. The participation is governed by the Missouri State High School Activities Association, not the district. This option is giving the district the flexibility of what do we want to do? And our consideration was given to students, say, that come to the learning center. They might have to go mow options, or they might have to go work keys or work school, and they're taking Plato, earning credits. Well, those students traditionally, this is allowing them an opportunity to participate. Whereas, our belief is just such that, we offer opportunities to kids that are enrolled here first. We want to meet that obligation first. And that's why, and when we spoke with the school attorney, that was the option, she said go.
The option that she, that we talked about and that we're all comfortable with was non-traditional option one, because they are transcribed, they are our transcribed students. So that's why we're here tonight.
But in no behavior control, that is a real concern.
It's a struggle. And the same thing, we had a student call up and say, I'm a homeschool student, I want to access your library. And we're sorry, that's for the kids, correct? It's for the kids enrolled here. We don't offer a grade in that. You know, we have the public libraries of Jefferson County that you can go and access the information. You still get into that same conundrum of you open that door and stuff to monitor everything that you're gonna allow access to.
I go to church with several families that are home.
Some is in church?
Yes.
Go on.
And with their homeschooling, I think the homeschool thing's developed so much that, I mean, they're homeschooled, but they actually go somewhere for school. They have sports teams, they have all these activities for that textile or that education they chose.
Well, they're homeschool teams recognized by the State High School Activities Association. As a matter of fact, we've played them in baseball and basketball, they're called Patriots, the Patriots and the Patriots. And there are homeschool kids from all over the St. Louis area that play on those teams. I think one of the main reasons that this has come to effect the way it has is because of the, Dr. Corbin would be fair to say, the pressure that's been put on the Missouri State High School Activities Association to come up with something. So what they came up with was putting it back on us.
Of course.
They wanted the local control.
And they keep the local control. So that's why we are where we are, and it's one of those deals that it's new this year and everyone is trying to develop their policy or procedure, and so that's why we are where we are.
So when you talked to Selinda, and you said that the non-traditional option one was her recommendation, what were the disadvantages of going with that one?
I don't want to say that it was her recommendation, I would say that's what she was comfortable with. That's what we were comfortable when we talked, I don't want to put the word recommendation in her mouth.
Why was, why weren't you and why was she more comfortable with this one even over like the first one?
Well, okay, to answer that question, you don't, you don't have to accept any of them. You can just go, hey, we're doing, we're doing more traditional option only. That's it. We felt as though the non-traditional option gave those kids who were still in an alternative type setting through, and so they transcribed on our transcript, the opportunity to still participate.
So right now, the learning center students are not allowed?
No, they can't.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. It's just not a policy.
If they're in home and six credit-bearing hours.
Right, right.
If there are no options, they cannot?
They can't because they don't have that many.
The learning center is a little different too, because it's partially on a four-hour block with the learning center. And the rule is you have to pass 80% of your classes. But with the learning center, they have to pass all four. Because if they only pass three, it'd be 75. So they have to pass all four in order to meet that 80 standard. So whenever we have learning center kids that want to participate, I just have to go through, we have to look at everything and make sure all looks up.
So if we went with this non-traditional option one, if a student took like three credits here and then went to Jeffco and took, you know...
As long as they were through us, you know, we would put it on their transcript.
Right, but they would still be eligible to participate.
Basically, anything that the school district is gonna recognize and add to their transcript, we also recognize.
So, and I'm trying to remember back from years ago. Sometimes I have a hard time doing that though. Is hockey, is hockey a recognized Misha sport or is it still fun?
It's an emerging sport or a club sport or activity.
What about like, for example, let's say Christian Outbridge. Someone goes to school there, is a resident, but a sport isn't offered there. Say football, for example, they don't have basketball. Does that play into this at all? No, okay.
No, because they're not a bona fide student of ours.
Okay, so they can't, correct?
Kind of like, students, I'll use boys volleyball as an example. We don't offer boys volleyball, but I can't go to Northwest and play boys volleyball because I'm not a Northwest student.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
He used hockey for that reason, because I couldn't think of it.
Sure, no, I get it.
Okay, so this is concerned other schools coming here?
It also prevents kids from other schools coming here. You know...
They're not happy with their team and they want to play here.
I mean, I think, and I appreciate Eddie and Kathy, trying to be flexible and try to include more kids that as much, as many kids as possible by still having control. And I think of discipline and issues that arise, and that's what you're running into. But we want to go beyond just a bona fide student, because that's changed. Some kids take mobile classes, some kids, you know, do online learning, and that's recognized in the district. We want to be sure they have an opportunity to play so choose.
We've had students access our curriculum, I am all for it, I am completely all for it. But, and we're talking, you know, this evening, an issue was presented regarding one of our students who is homeschooled that comes to us to access part of our curriculum. Students are awesome kids, this is not about one student. In my mind, this is about opening a floodgate. Or closing a floodgate, protecting our floodgates, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
So this is to discuss, but we're gonna pick it up in there, not to make a decision tonight, because it's a policy change.
It's a procedure change. This is, would not be a board, I don't...
It's not gonna be, it doesn't change a policy, well, I know it's...
The board has policies that govern Misha athletics, did you see any in there?
It's adaptable.
It should say procedure.
So, the student athlete must comply with Hillsborough District eligibility standards and policies, and those policies as far as POE policy references are JEA, which is part-time attendance, JECC-1, which is transfers from accredited and unaccredited schools.
That's all about enrollment.
Correct. And then IKF, which is earning credit. Those are the board policies that we would cross over with.
What was the second one, JC?
You have, you have JEA, JECC-1, and IKF. Those are the three policies, the board policies that cross over into this.
Now, but there has to be a point of clarification, whether we're talking enrollment or we're talking participation in athletics. Right, so you're talking about you're wanting to change the policies with regard to enrolling and what credits are recognized.
We're talking about changing policies to what we will allow students to participate in both extracurricular activities after the school. For instance, this is not just Misha activities, this would be your choirs, your band, your drama, your, all your clubs we offer through the school, your theater. And there are things tied like with theater that in order to be part of their council or whatever they go to, you have to be a high school student and this, that, and yet. So that, this basically encompasses all of that that we're looking at. And unfortunately, like you could make it, it could just refer to athletics and Misha activities, but then in my opinion, or only my opinion, you, you're doing more for one than the other, whereas it's easier just to do it the same all across the board, is how I look at that. That may not necessarily be the right answer, but that's just how I perceive that through my lens, that if we do it the same across the board, we don't open ourselves for questions later of, well, they get to do this, but how come I can't do that? Things of that nature, for consistency sake.
But to go back to whether it's a policy or procedure, I mean, this looks like a policy addition. I mean, isn't that what this is?
And I don't know that it is. You're not changing your board, I don't see how you're changing your board policy. Let's pull it up, can you pull it up real quick? Which, what's the first one, Ed?
Which one?
JEA.
All?
JEA.
So not only on Misha accredited activities, this is extending on all across the district, just district-wide?
The way it's what is, it's non-traditional students only doing the same. Just being our, it's all extracurricular activities.
Okay, that's, that's compulsory, part-time. Compulsory attendance, talking about students will be enrolled, but they can't enroll, you scrolling down?
Is it possible to make it any better?
Students withdrawing.
Part-time attendance is what I was focusing on.
Now, you want to look at, which one you looking at, part-time attendance?
Part-time attendance is where it was referred to.
No, please, talk about, this is with regard to students enrolled in eligibility to participate on a part-time basis. It's not about how students will participate in after-school activities or sports or athletics. That's about how they're gonna enroll in school.
JECC-1, which is transfers from accredited and unaccredited schools.
That's how you can accept students that transfer in. Other schools based on credits.
Right there.
That's a sign of students' grade levels, I don't think that's it, is it?
Scroll down.
You have to go back. Transfers from unaccredited schools?
Yeah, that's how it's been typed in.
Transfers from unaccredited, all push forwards, Eric, form please.
Well, we can't give tonight.
Transfers from unaccredited schools. Number criteria, the term grade level, placement age, achievement test, performance, and again, that's a replacement, yeah. This is potential award credit in class. This is what you're looking at for awarding credits if a student was a homeschool kid and you were trying to put them into a particular class.
Correct.
And this is the, is this the only policy we have on it so far?
Well, this isn't even about, this is even about participating in athletics.
Right, I know, but this is so, this would be a policy addition, this is what we're talking about.
I still don't think this, I think it's how the procedure of how we're gonna go forward in addressing students with regard to Misha. I don't know that it's a, I mean, it can be a policy, but you're gonna adopt and revise a new policy.
I mean, isn't this what it says here at the bottom, the rationale of purpose and justification of need is that the Misha wants us to adopt a policy on this? Isn't that what they're asking us to do?
Is that what they want, Eddie, or not?
That, I'll take responsibility for that, that's probably a procedure instead of policy. I see what you're saying. Misha wants the local school to have something in place, I mean, how they will or will not accept the three levels of students. So policy is the wrong word, that's my fault.
Do you need this tonight?
Yeah, that's...
Because I know you were dealing with one particular student.
It's something they have to have right now.
We've had several phone calls from people that are homeschooling their children, asking what our procedure is or how we go about that. You know, up until this year, it was always a, unless they're an enrolled student or a bona fide student, they can't participate outside of it. And now it's a, hey, there are some things going on. There's one parent that's particular to that, call that. But, yeah. It should be procedures to the policy and that holds it up, I understand, and that's my fault.
Well, because the policy adopts your particular, long, right?
I believe this is, in talking with Selinda, this is a procedure that we will follow and what we recommend, what our practice is.
And she, she looked at it as a procedure?
I was texting, I'm trying to ask.
And your recommendation would be to focus on the non-traditional option one?
Yeah, and to be honest with you, across the state, it's all over. Some schools are just saying, hey, we only want our traditional students, that's what we want. Some schools are trying to meet in the middle and go non-traditional option one. And I honestly, I don't, I'm not saying there aren't any, but I don't know many right now that are doing the non-traditional option two. Doesn't mean they don't exist, I just don't know about them.
So you feel that the non-traditional option one is kind of in the middle?
Yeah, I feel like the non-traditional option one is a middle-of-the-road type deal that is a nice compromise. Compromise, yeah.
What districts locally are, have one with these?
Locally, we discussed this in our last AD meeting, and they're, I think they're all waiting for us.
Waiting for us, why are they waiting for us?
Because I can tell you that myself in the Joplin AD, I talked about this quite a bit at the Kansas State Athletic Conference, and there are a lot of, over the summer conference, a lot of ADs that were going to awards to get this in place. Dr. Erhan, who's the director of Misha, specifically addressed this at the area meeting that we had, and there was a topic of conversation where he said, make sure you get something in place. You don't want to not have something in place, you want to get something in place.
So with all this discussion, with the surrounding schools, et cetera, what were their concerns? Any concerns that we haven't already been thrown out?
No, no.
So why are they waiting on Hillsborough? I mean, because we look really smart?
No, I think, because they want to be able to go and say, well, you know, this is...
Somebody else did it this way. It's easier to let somebody else take the lead. Well, that was Selinda, and she said it is more of an administrative procedure. That's how she's looking at it and suggesting for us to follow that way.
All of these have been drafted by Misha, right? These?
These options?
These options?
Yes.
Okay.
That is what is approved in the mission handbook, and that, so when I reference those, if you were to want to go and look at them online, or I have them in my office, that's the 2.3.4, another review book, yeah. Those are the exact... I literally copied and pasted onto this, so you guys can read everything that was there. With the underlying, everything that's underlined is new this year, that went into effect July 1.
So if we become very, I'm kind of a compromising type person, but like, say, in two years there are issues, we can go back and change that procedure.
And actually, that was one of the things...
So they just test market.
I think that was one of the things we specifically talked about with Selinda, that...
Policy makes it easier to do that as well.
You can always be, you can always meet the middle and go back.
Right.
As opposed to start here and go forward.
Right. Because we have been at A, I mean, we are at A now.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
I mean, that's where we are. So, this would be loosening the reins a little bit, do a test market for a couple of years, and if there's issues, then we rein it back in.
And to be quite honest with all of you sitting here, it's a handful of kids a year.
Oh, I agree.
We're not talking 20, 30, I mean, we're talking literally about a handful.
Yeah, but that could grow.
It could.
It could. And I think the, being like an old retired teacher, that oftentimes, homeschools was used as, oh, we have an issue, and so we encourage them to homeschool, and that's not the attitude anymore.
Sure.
So that, you know, has kind of changed as well. It's not...
Okay, so...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just have one more thing, like, I get, like, I understand behavioral, like, the whole behavioral aspect, like, I can totally see it, because discipline having no range of discipline, that is an issue, but just the social aspect too, like, you're kind of denying the students that, like, the ability to socialize with kids in their local area necessarily.
We're not denying them anything. Their parents are denying them that.
I mean, so they have made a choice that have, they're denying themselves that.
But they have social, they have social aspects, though, within their homeschooling organizations.
They're still participating in class.
There's a wide variety of reasons why people homeschool, though.
Correct.
I mean, it's not like the parents are, I mean, there's religious, there's, we all know there's a lot of...
But that's what you said, it was a choice. It wasn't necessarily denying somebody something. Because when you make choices, there are consequences that go with that, or guidelines to follow, no matter what.
There's trade-offs.
Give and take, that's right.
I mean, there's trade-offs, whenever you make a choice.
That's how it is.
And, compared to the non-traditional option two, you think that's the more rigid one because it requires seat time? Is that really, so, because you're saying...
I think, I think that option one is the more rigid, because it does require seat time and the transcribed through our school.
Well, it doesn't say it requires seat time. It says all or some of the courses or credits are not taken at the full means. So that could mean that...
I missed some numbers here. Like, traditional option, or there's...
I'm talking about non-traditional option one or non-traditional two.
Non-traditional option one versus...
Non-traditional option one is the transcribed credits.
Right.
Non-traditional option two for other schools alone is...
I was just asking, in your estimation, you think that non-traditional option two is more rigid on them?
I think it's more loosely covered, more...
So number three says that all the courses have to be completed by the high schools.
So it's a semester.
The non-traditional option two, Eddie, correct me if I'm wrong, is homeschool students bringing you their grades, you put on your transcripts from their homeschool courses.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
So basically, non-traditional option two, which says public schools home, because private schools are private schools. This is the one that was concerned. So you are recommending, we already have traditional option A.
Correct.
Now, we're looking at non-traditional option one.
Correct.
Which means they can come full-time, like option A. They can take part-time classes, virtual learning, they can take online learning as long as we give work studies, work keys, as long as we give them credit.
Mm-hmm.
And they have to complete the class by the end of the semester.
By the end of the semester. Would it be all right if I asked Kathy Freeman, what is your opinion? This isn't really a high school curriculum, I mean, no offense here, but what do you, which one do you feel is the better for your high school?
It's such a difficult question. And I don't mean to be wishy-washy, it's just that we have kids enrolled in seven hours going to school, we have other kids that are here trying to graduate from high school and they're just doing it with a traditional approach, but luckily, we are blessed to have programs for those kids. And then we have kids who, who they and their parents choose not to enroll them full-time in our school, and that if they want to access band or choir or the gate program, and we had that at the high school and things of that nature. And it's always been very accommodating. But I, I definitely see where, I mean, I definitely felt that I did not want to deny one of our full-time students an opportunity to have a part in something that one of our full-time students could have undertaken and maybe missed out on because of that other student. And that's where my decision came from, to agree to that.
So which one are you hoping that we go with?
I, I'm, I don't know if I'm a fan of any of it, to be perfectly honest, but I feel that that, the non-traditional one, what is it?
Option one.
Option one is probably our best approach to accommodate.
There have been many conversations between myself, Dr. Corman, Dr. Freeman, trying to figure out, what is the best option? What is best, what is right by kids, what is right for all kids? What is our course of action that we want to take? It's not an easy decision by any of us.
I truly struggled with this for a long, I mean, it was very difficult for me, because I'm one of those people that I would have been like, oh, yeah, the more the merrier. That's honestly how I feel, but then when you really break it down and think about it, it could be taking something away from one of our kids who are enrolled full-time.
So you've already been accommodating for some?
Absolutely.
So this is going to limit them? I mean, what you have been doing, you were going, some of those would not...
Our students have been coming and accessing the curriculum, but they have not been able to compete in anything that was, so if they came to band, they participated in the class, they participated in maybe a Friday night show, but they could not compete for any band competition.
Okay, so this will help them? Because they will be able to?
No, because they'll still not be able, they'll be able to take the class.
Well, this, I thought we were saying that they would, as long as they meet these requirements. For non-traditional option one, if they meet all these requirements, then they would be able to? I thought that's what we were saying here. Am I missing something?
Correct, but those students may choose not to do, but this gives them the option that if they choose to do what is outlined in option one here, then yes, they could.
That's what I'm saying.
But if they choose not to do that, if a homeschool student decided that they still wanted to come and take band first hour, and they wanted to participate in band, but they didn't want to compete, which is what they do now, because they're not enrolled in the full day, they would still do that. Or if the student said, you know what, I'm going to take two hours at the high school, and then I'm going to go and I'm going to get these credits transcribed, they could do that, yes. But they still have to meet the requirements of this.
Right.
But they could choose not to do that.
Right. I'm just, when she said she was already accommodating for them, I was thinking, maybe they weren't having to come to class at all, they were just maybe coming just to band or something like that.
Yes, I do have kids who just come for band.
So will this...
Ban the class or ban the performance?
Just ban the class, because that's the law, we have to provide those...
Because it's for a grade.
It's access to the grade.
But it's not enough grades to participate...
Correct.
In a competition.
Correct.
But...
Because that's the criterion that they're not meeting.
Correct.
They have to take more courses or enroll more programs if they really wanted to compete.
Correct.
But they performed like our local Hillsborough band concert.
They might have to, yeah, right, they're in the field show, but they can't go march for trophies and compete for trophies.
Right, just here at our homeschool.
Right, right.
They can be in the parade, they can do the game, they can be, and they would go to the band concert, because that's part of the curriculum.
They're not just going to regional or state...
The band concert is part of the grade in the class, so then, they just can't do mission solo and ensemble.
Right.
At a state competitions level, of that nature.
Could you give me an example, Eddie, of, like, I'm looking at non-traditional option one, number one, it says the student is an enrolled student of the high school, but all, and take out the word our son, but all of the courses are not taken at the local high school. Could you give me an example of a student that would, that would apply to...
Work keys, work study.
Appreciate the quick quiz on my phone. It would be something like a Jefco student, a work study student, a Plato, an online, a MOVIP, a Missouri options program.
They wouldn't be on our campus at all, they would be...
That's, that's possible.
So you're saying that that wouldn't include homeschool, though? Couldn't they enroll and then say, we're doing, I mean, that's...
No, because the grade has to be awarded through us.
Okay.
The grade has to be awarded, that's why it says transcribed in that first...
I'm just afraid somebody would try to debate that.
And they have to improve in their curriculum.
And on your question, Saharsky, it says, through meeting all of the following, if you follow that, and then they got to meet one, two, and three, which is an enrolled student of the high school, all credits attempted to earn placed in the high school transcript, and all classes closed by the end of the semester. So even though they're doing the question you asked, they still have to meet those three things, no matter what.
I, I just was, I...
I don't know what kind of kid that would be, I was getting a question. Who was qualified for that? And I go, I want to go back just for a point of reference. When we're talking about these students that are participating in the band, it's because bands were a grade, and they have to have a performance, which is for the grade, that's part of the course, which is, you've got to be on the field march because it's part of the grade for the course. That's why you had, because I know bands quite scratchy, they go, hold on a minute, that doesn't even make sense, how come this kid can't do because theater? Right?
It's not attached to class. But our musicals and our players are not attached to the class.
It's not attached to part of the grade, right? So that's why that student wasn't participating, because it's not attached as part of the grade.
If theater were part of the grade...
If theater were a course, a year-long or whatever, and they had to play in the school.
And we have drama as a class, but it's separate. You do not have to be in drama to participate in the play or the musical, you don't have to be in, or vice versa.
Right.
This gets you things such as college, drawing things there.
I have all of it.
Okay, so...
I'll make a motion.
Okay, hang on just a second. I look at letters, or non-traditional option one, as making a move towards that, and we can see how it goes and see, we may come up with problems that we didn't know would exist. Or we may not have any issues and think, oh, this is okay, you know? And that gives us a step forward that we can continue to move...
And I think that's where our goal is by the end of this discussion, and what we're looking at, this exact procedure for.
So the recommendation, then, is for us to accept the procedure for the non-traditional option number one. Everybody with me on that? So I need a motion to accept this recommendation, to approve adopting this procedure.
Make a motion.
Okay, I have Rob and Eric. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of accepting this option? All right, very good.
Thank you guys for your work on that.
Good, thank you.
Our brains are really fried at this point. We've had a lot of topics tonight that were more complicated. Okay, moving on to letter H, has to do with approving the implementation of a substance abuse intervention program in the junior high, the junior high and the high school. You should have had a chance to look through that summary as well.
Did any of all that make sense? I mean, it was kind of wordy, but it really has to be defined. And I want to be clear, that says for first-time offenders, not repeat offenders, but first-time offenders, because our whole focus is to change the behavior.
Right.
Getting back in school. And the board, I mean, talked about this, I know, have a dozen times, the past two years.
My question was, it was both junior high and high school, and it was prepared by all high school staff. And he, did they just do the paperwork for you? I mean...
That's how I get things done.
Do you? I was just asking.
The high schools confirm for full-time, and we've been, any kind of support we can get for treating the problem here.
Right.
The earlier the better.
And with any of our policies, we'd always stagger on us, get them from the junior high or from the high school, to make sure we're in some sort of alignment.
I need to accept this procedure.
Okay, we have a first and a second by Eric, to accept this proposal, to implement this program. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, raise your hands. All right, very good. Okay, next one has to do with our food service agreement. We have, has to do with approving the reclassification of all food service substitutes.
Oh, I second the one, sorry. Food service application agreements.
I'm trying to hurry it, I guess, I don't know. All right, so we're looking at the breakfast and lunch application. I'll go back to that one in a minute. Skip down, I guess. Huh?
One second.
Beth made a motion to approve the food service application agreement, and so did Rob, he seconded it. Any questions about that? All in favor to accept this?
Trusting you.
Okay, there you go, Kim. Okay. There it is. Now we're looking at part-time food service classification and salary movement. Okay? We need a motion to approve the reclassification of food service substitutes as part-time food service, to include the requirement that they must work a minimum of 500 hours in the preceding fiscal year to be eligible for a step increase impact. So it's just kind of a juggling thing. Okay, Eric, I heard second. Jane? Okay? I did, did Eric.
How many employees would that affect?
I want to say 20. John, how many total?
It's 25 subs.
So there's 10 subs and 25 currently part-time, that's the only group that has a part-time staff. And really, they're interchangeable, you see it on your list.
Right.
You know, it's a three-hour, people are coming and going, and kind of what's precipitating this, is a part-time staff member, all it needs is, we put you on the schedule more consistently than it's supposed to. But we've had issues where a part-time person literally will take off like, I gotta be gone for three months, and they come back like, where's my job? I'm here, you know, we fill people in place. And then they would get a step.
Then they get a step.
You know, and they, you know, literally take off a semester, come back, and so putting me in place, 500 hours is basically, take 168 school days, times a three-hour, is like 504 hours, something like that. And if you add in some concession stand duty, or you actually self for a full-day food service person, it could be eight hours. It's just, you know, if you have perfect attendance, it's just a good amount. And for those, you know, we'll go through the salary schedule, it gives all the subs, there won't be a sub-food service, let's just be, our part-time staff will be figuring, we'll do an audit at the end of the year, how many people worked 500, and we'll move them on the salary schedule.
Now, it's making it, your part-time food service workers a bigger pool, who gets premium, like dips on shift? How do you determine? Because obviously, you're not going to work them all.
Like, our current staff, obviously, but we've talked about, if you're one of those, we don't have, a part-time staff doesn't have leave days.
Right.
And so if, you know, we've talked about it, a part-timer says, hey, I'm going to take off for the next two weeks, well, just like, they may not be on the schedule as much that third week. We're going to try to reward those that are, show up and are consistent in their work, you know? The ones who are here consistently right now, we're going to continue to be, and so...
So they're part-time because we don't have enough... So they're part-time because we don't have enough time for them to be full, I mean, don't have enough spaces or slots for them to be full-time?
They're there during lunch periods, or, you know, so that's our big crunch time. We don't necessarily need them there eight hours or six hours.
Right, okay.
But they're there for the free that we're consistently busy.
Right, okay, the lunch shifts.
And since it's only three hours, it's a very transient type, to commit an entire day to come in for...
So this is incentive then to keep people to stay?
Or just do, like, um, I don't know, give them, the people that come every day, that they would still get, you know, they would get a raise, they don't have to worry, but they have people that miss, you know, constantly, but then still get the same raise that people are here every day. It's kind of bizarre, isn't it?
So is it a big jump?
As far as...
How much of an increase or a step?
Well, it's just on the food service salary schedule. I mean, there's kind of, well...
What step then?
We have a few that have been here five or six years, they're gonna have, they're committed to us, and that's still, they're gonna still get there. This is just trying to, at the end of the year, I, it'll be kind of interesting to see how many have 500 hours, because it is so strange, they'll all come in.
So we don't know how many...
We really, you know, we don't. And the reason we're, I'm bringing it to you now, is so that we could talk with the food service department, say, hey, come next year, you know, we're talking in June, and we gotta work towards that 500 hours, and we'll keep going.
Okay, any other thoughts?
Actually, I had one pocket of mine.
Okay.
What about, if there's 20 or 25 people on this list?
Yes.
How many do we use daily? Because if they have to get 500 hours, but we only need 10 to 12...
I hate for somebody to say that.
How many do we need, how many do we use a day?
It depends on what school you're in, but like the high school...
I'm talking about across the entire school district.
We have like 17.
Seventeen, oh, okay.
Every day.
Well, okay, I took 17, 25.
And you have that, plus you have, the succession stand was open tonight.
So they all have equal opportunities for 500 hours?
It's very easy to get the 500.
And I think that's what, what you, I've been saying, you want to make sure that people weren't left out of the opportunities, and that we had enough time that you could get your 500 out.
I've meetings with all, whoever wants to be heard at school for the season, and we schedule that, and then we can work, you know, if they can or can't work, it'll be kind of like that, like we schedule instead of, so...
Okay. All right, so we still have a motion on the floor to approve this reclassification.
I'll second it.
We already have a question, so we're ready to go, I think.
Sorry. That's okay.
Okay, all in favor of accepting this reclassification? All right. Next one has to do with approving the employee recognition dinner for this school year. They said a date, I believe, as well.
March eighth.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Renee. Any questions about the recognition dinner and the date of it? I noticed it's not on my birthday this year.
Well...
I mean, it has been several years, I was just saying.
Had I purposely checked back to see what Thursday of the month the last one was, and scheduled a trip around it? Aloha.
So you're not gonna be there?
That's correct, I'm gonna be in Hawaii at that time. That's right, I thought maybe you knew that, E.
Mr. Allison and I will go in your stead.
That's a good plan, nicely done. Okay, um, all in favor of appro, of approving the recognition dinner and date? Okay. Okay, getting down to L, our last item, we need to discuss, um, am I wrong?
You're right.
Oh. Okay.
I mean, I'm wrong.
Talk about the lease bus situation, the two buses, right?
Correct.
That we approved at one point, but now there's a little hitch.
Well, there's, there's a hitch, um, and I had Regina draft this, we talked about it, um, and I sent to you the revised term sheet. Eric, can you click on that revised term sheet for me there, I think the second or third, you might have to blow it up a little bit. Um, the Midwest Transit came to the district, well, actually, they, I think they've already ordered the buses and they're ready to be delivered, and they're holding off on us to sign the lease agreement. When we got the lease agreement, we started going through it, and, um, first of all, first of all, it said we were getting three buses, um, so we were excited about that, but actually, we only needed two. And then when we started looking through the lease agreement, the payments, it had six payments on there, uh, and after a lot of conversation, I said, we're just making one payment, why do we have six payments up here? And grew a little concerned over that, we called the attorney, called Midwest and said, why are there six? Well, Midwest's response was, in case you decide to go ahead and keep them, you'll know that you can pay it on out over six years. My response, no, this is a six-year lease agreement. What gets you out of the lease agreement, um, click down, Erin, maybe lease documents, is that it? Click on that before we... Is this lease document, and this is basically a vehicle assignment sheet, and what happens is that Midwest takes over this, and it's, it's pretty well spelled out, you know, after July 1, 2018, we're taking over the property, but it really wasn't clear that they were going to absolve us of the lease. So we had sent it up to the attorneys who redlined and marked all over it, I'll hand this, if I have enough conscience, this is my copy. They redlined this up, and I sent it back to Midwest and said, hey, no, we can't sign a six-year lease, the board only approved a one-year lease, we can't sign a six-year lease. Um, and I knew that Santander was not going to revise their six-year lease agreements, so therefore, um, our best course of action was to deal with this redline document of making sure that, that Midwest is going to assume that property, basically no matter what, because your issue is this, what would happen eight months, nine months from now if Midwest is no longer in business? Who's gonna take care of, who's gonna take your six-year lease? So, um, this puts you in a better position, a perfect position would just be a one-year lease with your name on it. Um, when I talked to the attorney, I said, so, good, better, best, and best would be one year. Better is this with redlined up, and I did feel better after speaking with the attorneys, they told me that we're not the first school district that's run into this, but it seemed like after the relationship got going, um, it was better and a lot smoother. So I guess we're to the point of...
Haven't we dealt with Midwest before?
Well, I'm talking about in this, in a lease of this nature. I'm talking about in a lease, not just purchasing buses, but yes, we've dealt with Midwest before. But they have been around forever. We still need the buses, and I, I know Regina will tell you that, and Matt will tell you that, we need the buses. Uh, we're comfortable, more so now that we have the redline agreement, and it took them, what, Regina, maybe 30 minutes to respond, we agree with all your changes.
Yeah, it's 30 minutes.
So, um, I just want you to know that as a board, by approving this, you understand six years, but we've got a better guarantee that they're taking the property, and it says clearly on July 1, 2018 at the top of this, but since you voted a one-year in, we weren't gonna sign a six-year.
So we need to make a motion.
I'd say make a motion to approve the revised bus lease documents.
What would we have done after a year?
We were looking to do it again, because see, with your I-need fund or other childhood special aid, they reimburse you on the back end, so we can just keep reinvesting, doing a one-year lease every year, always have new buses for our special needs kiddos. That was the original fault.
But this is the same bus, so it's not getting any bus every year?
No, no, it don't. This bus is taken away from us July 2018 by Midwest, we can work another lease, that's modern staying, right, two new buses every year.
That is what it is, however, they will come back to us in Jan, in January to reevaluate to see if we want to go forward for next year, this January for next year. So at that time, we would have to make that decision if we want to continue one for next year with just these same buses. So isn't that one lease?
Yes, but what you do is say, no, we're not interested, for the value of it in July.
To do it.
And make a motion to approve.
To approve the new...
The redline version.
The revision.
The updated, okay.
The updated version. Do we have a second?
I see.
Thank you, Renee. Any other questions? All in favor of approving this revised agreement? All right, very good. All right, I need a motion to recess, and we'll have to go back to executive session shortly. Okay, I'm a first for that, and Eric second. All in favor for that? Okay. Okay, we'll give you 10 minutes to take a break, and then we'll briefly...